I’m going to call back into session the Bellevue City Council Extended Study Session. This is for Monday, November 25th, 2019. Council has been in executive session on two items. One, an item of potential litigation; one, an item of discussing the qualifications of a city official, which went very well. Mr. Miyake is doing a great job, so just pass that along. So we have approval of the agenda, and what I would like to do is amend the agenda to add an item for the city manager’s report to the council business and new initiatives, and that would be dealing with pedestrian safety.
So move that we amend the agenda to include pedestrian safety at the council business.
Okay, move, well, let’s adopt, let’s just go ahead and move to adopt the amended agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the amended agenda is approved. We are at communications written and oral. You have three minutes to speak to the council. We do have, I believe, five people signed up to speak in opposition to tent encampment. We will only be taking three, so I believe that will stop at Mr. Jackman. We’ll take them in the order that they were signed up. I believe there are two or three who have signed up to speak in favor, and so that would give us six. And are there anyone on any other topics?
Next, we have Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, other than Mr. Zimmerman.
And Mr. Ferretto, signed up to speak on the shelter.
Okay, perfect, then we’ll be able to fit all of those in within our timeframe. If you have not been here to testify, the green light, say your name and address. Green light comes on, you have three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you have one minute remaining, and when the red light comes on, you are done. So we’ll call people in the order of sign up and their topic.
I’m first speaker, Tony Cope, signed up to speak in opposition slash concern for tent encampment Lucca.
My name is Raymond Copes. I go by Tony though, and I’m not really speaking in opposition. I have a concern. My wife and I are long-term residents of Bellevue, 13303 Southeast 57th Street. We’ve lived here for about 35 years. We’ve raised children, seen them through middle and high schools in Bellevue and college in this general area. We’ve witnessed our grandchildren attend college, most at the University of Washington. We’re currently involved with Newport Presbyterian Church, have worked on interfaith relationships since 9/11, including the annual interfaith marches and fairs, worked with other interfaith groups, and actively participated as a part of the Church Council of Greater Seattle’s East Side Interfaith Gathering on the Shelter Lucca. We witnessed your historic vote, four to three vote, to finally permit permanent emergency shelters on public and private land in Bellevue. We await a permit application for a permanent shelter, though. There are federal and state laws and court cases guaranteeing freedom for religious institutions to live their mission within minimal restrictions to ensure health and safety. Such restrictions are to ensure health and safety for all people, both housed and unhoused. We learned from the Shelter Lucca about the lack of low-barrier shelters in Bellevue. From my interfaith work, I came to appreciate that the faith community has opened its doors, parking lots, and lands for 25 years to provide the approximately 100 shelter beds on the East Side. This lack of shelter beds increases the need for alternative shelters, including organized tent encampments sited on religious land, to provide shelter for residents to survive in our city. The alternative is for the homeless to put up tents on the other side of fences and in green areas, in other words, close to people’s backyards. There is a proposal to allow only one encampment of a few months’ duration, once every 12 or 18 months. In our opinion, this effectively puts a moratorium on encampments in Bellevue and causes more people to be camping rough with no oversight whatsoever. Newport was one of the congregations that participated in the meetings convened by Church Council on Encampments in 2016. We identified 122 days as the ideal length of stay on religious land. In addition, we believe that the city allows, needs to allow religious institutions to carry out their missions and host more than one encampment every 12 or 18 months.
Okay, time is up, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are probably going to have difficulty counting for or against because there are a number of topics, so we’ll kind of keep that on testimony on one side of an issue.
Our next speaker on the list is Kaiser Sheriff, speaking in opposition concerns of the tent encampment Lucca.
Hello, my name is Kaiser Sheriff. I’m with the Muslim Community Resource Center. Hello, Mayor, and council members. Homeless people have a very few options of where to go for shelter on the East Side. With no permanent shelter beds available, people need alternative survival mechanisms. Organized encampments comprise one of them. The option for organized encampments gives an opportunity for people to live in community, have service support, keep their belongings with them, and be safe and secure. Organized tent encampments on religious lands are safer than unorganized encampments in the woods. MCRC has worked with two East Side encampments, Camp Unity and Tent City Four, for the last eight years. Members of the Muslim community have formed relationships with people experiencing homelessness residing in these tent encampments, and we consider them as friends. While issues of safety and security are usually talked about regarding the surrounding neighborhood, think of the fact that people experiencing homelessness are thinking about their own safety and security all the time, day and night. In fact, we know of one individual who lives in a tent city that’s located off of I-90 on the E., here, that wakes up in the morning at 4:00 a.m. and walks a trail for an hour to get to his aqua in order to take a bus to get to his work, and that’s not safe. MCRC has worked directly with people residing in tent city, East Side tent city encampments, and have seen what a difference the combination of safe space and some basic services mean in their lives. For example, during last winter snowstorm, we at MCRC hosted all of the residents of Tent City Four in a motel for three nights to just keep them safe. We routinely serve meals, provide propane tanks, kerosene, and other hygiene supplies to Tent City, and as well as the other organized encampments. We host an annual Thanksgiving dinner for people experiencing homelessness. Our event is tomorrow night at the Muslim Association of Pused Sound. Some of you have registered. We encourage you all to join us and eat with the neighbors. MCRC works with numerous interfaith congregations within Bellevue, including Catholic, Protestants, and Jewish communities. MCRC asked the city council to consider three changes to its draft temporary tent encampment Lucca. Number one, allow encampments to be hosted by religious institutions in the city of Bellevue when congregation is asked. Number two, allow more than one congregation to exercise the rights to practice the religion each year, to host when asked. And number three, allow encampment to remain in place for 122 days. It takes so much time and energy to permit, set up, and tear down an encampment, and it takes time to learn how to maneuver the public transit system after an encampment relocates. A 122-day length of stay means an encampment only has to move three times a year. This keeps the people from having to have their lives disrupted so frequently and provides more stability and security. Bellevue leads the way for the East Side, and MCRC asked that the city allow religious organizations to use the land to provide shelter. Thank you.
And thank you. I think the way I’m going to do this is pro-encampment and, I don’t want to say anti-encampment, but that it’s actually favoring encampments and concern about encampments. That’d probably be the way to put it. I think we’re in, we now have time for something different.
Our next speaker on the list is Alex Zimmerman.
Oh, thank you very much. A little bit surprised me, but I’m very happy, so you gave me a chance to speak. Is this new system, what does it have, a specific system for any? Okay, thank you very much. Zihail Majdori, Nazi Gestapo antisemite, pig from Animal Farm, fascist and killer. My name is Alex Zimmerman, and I’m president of Stand Up America, an organization, not profit organization. Nuance very important. So a couple days ago, a landmark article come to Seattle Times, I think right by Rebecca Friedland. She’s a Jewish director. This article show about something, what is I talking about this for you, and I know for 30 years what is I’m here, it’s very interesting. It’s talking about government antisemitism, about reaction from Seattle government, from Mayor Durkan, and from council. From them, I have 11 trespass for 1,500 days, all fraud. Right now, Kin County Council, Dombowski, together with Lambert and Sheriff, make another fabricate case, will be suing in court and put me in jail. So, guys, situation so unique, you know what it means, and so standard, so nothing unusual, but this landmark article show something, what is I have experienced and my family have experienced before with Soviet Union fascism, with German fascism, Soviet Union fascism, antisemitic fascism. I come to America, and I’m dissident in Soviet Union in Moscow for many years. I come to America more than 30-plus years, like political and religion refugee. So, situation right now with this article show right now what this direction we have right now in Seattle, because from my understanding, Seattle 100 percentage is antisemite city, you know what it means, without exception. I cannot understand how Jewish, for example, organization like, support, for example, one-party system that is existing in Seattle. Is this council, for example, and everybody pure antisemitic? You can see this in council chamber every day. I come to council chamber for 12 years, spoke almost 3,000 times, yep, in Kin Country, in Seattle, in Fronte Comite, everywhere. Guys, situation right now very simple. We need stopping this. I cannot believe, you know what it means, I live in Bellevue for 25 years, I cannot believe, so Seattle, Kin Country, number one fascist city in America. We have, for example, in Seattle, 70 percentage people have college degree, 20 percentage have top degree like me, you understand about talking? How is this possible, these people bring Seattle, Kin Country, right now bring Gold State, one, bring Gold State, Washington, to total fascism and antisemitism is a first, first point, what is you see how fascism working? Because for thousand and thousand year, so Stand Up America right now, it’s not about antisemitism, it’s about we need stopping Seattle fascism, this Nazi Gestapo principle. Thank you very much. Is this article very important? First article, what is I see for 30-plus years?
Time’s up. Thank you. Thank you.
Your next speaker on the list is Linda Benson, speaking in support of the tent encampment Lucca.
So, just so we know, are you speaking in support of encampments, or are you speaking in?
Yeah, I was confusing, encampments, and, and the...
I’m trying to, we have, I’m trying to, if you’re supporting encampments or you have concern about encampments?
I have concern, a little, I’m supporting the use of encampments.
Okay, perfect, great, thank you.
Does that make sense?
Go ahead.
Hi, I’m Linda Benson. I’ve been with the Sophia Way now for two years. Before that, five years with Nursing Networks, trying to create networks cross sectors to come together, to fill gaps. Before that, 20 years at Hope Link, and four days as a resident of Camp Unity. Last year in the city of Bellevue, we served more than 1,000 women here in Bellevue who are experiencing homelessness here on the East Side. Here’s a snapshot. Every one of them was unhoused and are dependent on the decisions made here today. More than a third are over the age of 55. 46% have a chronic disability. 70% are dealing with domestic and other forms of violence. 20% or more have zero income, $0. More than 60% present as having serious mental health problems. They represent the epitome of a very vulnerable population of people who live here. They also represent a subset of a population much greater in size on the East Side that are also very seriously vulnerable and in need of stability. In the absence of a safe and affordable place to call home, their greatest need is stability. This means that they know where they’re going to be able to sleep that night in a safe and dependable place. They need sleep, to eat, to shower, and to belong. They need a place to put their worldly possessions down for an hour, or a night, or a day, or a month. That would be a gift. Until we figure out how we can provide safe, appropriate, affordable housing for all of our community, we have to rely on every resource out there available. One of those is to listen and learn to those who are surviving homelessness. This includes tent encampments. Without tent encampments, we would be screwed. We just don’t know it. Tonight at the Sophia Way, we would literally be turning away dozens of women tonight without tent encampments. We have 50 spaces. When we hit that, we’re done. Where do they go? We can either fight their ability to keep themselves safe and alive, or we can help them. We need our communities of faith to be free to help with our emergency shelter stay inside and tent encampments. They are indeed pleading for the right to provide life-saving support. Are we going to let them do that? I support the resolution that would allow for 122 days of stay, and if there has to be a limit and a gap, let it be less than, than one year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we, that is three people speaking in favor of the use of tent encampments, so we will not be taking anybody, anyone else on that tonight, but we can take people who have concern about tent encampments.
Our next speaker on the list is Leonardo Barros Ferretta. He’s signed up to speak on, in support of regional issues.
Is there an individual, Leonardo, on regional issues? Are you here?
I don’t see him.
Okay. All right, let’s continue on. If he comes back, we can, we’ll still have a little time.
Our next speaker is, I guess, Joel Jackman, and he has signed up to speak in opposition slash concern to the tent encampment Lucca.
Okay, so I believe I said Mr. Jackman would be the last on this. That doesn’t appear to be the case, so I think the Morises are also up on it. Mr. Jackman.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You’ve heard arguments that Bellevue’s existing regulations or possible improvements and changes violate our Lupa or federal or state constitutions. Several people have cherry-picked clauses from a couple of court cases. Other cases, including the consent decree here in Bellevue, in a Bothell case, found cities do have a right to regulate in order to protect public health and safety. In the Bellevue Consent Decree, Section 3.1 said, I’ll quote, “The purposes of resolving this dispute,” for the purposes of resolving this dispute, “the parties agree that the ordinance accommodates the free exercise of religion, does not substantially burden the free exercise of religion, is valid and enforceable exercise of the city’s police power, and is facially valid under the United States Constitution, the Washington Constitution, and under our Lupa.” On the Washington State Supreme Court ruling in 2009 on the Woodinville NUCC case, the reports you have heard are leaving out important points. First, that case involved a moratorium and a separate legal agreement between the parties, which led Woodinville to refuse to process a permit. These unique circumstances do not exist here. There are other parts in that ruling that would support the recommendations of Bellevue neighbors. Clause 25 says, I quote, “The context for the constitutional evaluation of any burden necessarily encompasses impact on others in the city. Housing the homeless affects those outside the church in a way that private prayer or religious services inside the church buildings do not. Indeed, a homeless encampment likely affects the neighbors who live nearby far more than it impacts most parishioners who spend only hours in church weekly, while neighbors must live continuously with the encampment. Cities may mediate these externalities reflecting concerns for safety, noise, and crime, but they may not outright deny consideration of permitting.” That was all the quote from this hearing. Also, footnote four brings up another consideration pertinent to the situation in Bellevue. Quote, “When deciding if a government regulation is a substantial burden, courts should look at any alternatives the regulation leaves open. For example, at oral argument, the church conceded that it would be possible to host housed tent city inside the church. Worship traditionally takes place inside a church, and this alternative would obviate many of the neighbor-city legitimate concerns. We make no decision on such regulation because the city did not allow such alternative.”
We’ve got your, yeah, and we have your, thank you for providing the written testimony. We do have that here.
Our next speaker is John Morris, signed up in opposition concern to the tent encampment Lucca.
Evening, Council. I’m John Morris. Information’s on file here. The Church Council of Greater Seattle claims proposals overemphasize security, focusing on perceptions of some members of the community and needs to re-establish a balance. The members of the community they are referring to suggest that balance, at the very least, implies that operators and hosts keep their commitments affecting public health and safety made repeatedly at public meetings. It has been demonstrated with factual documents that their preferred operations do not do that. Improvement is needed to achieve balance, not retrenchment. Once again, we suggest the following, as, as, do the following. Recurrent warrant checks, or if not, some effective method that keeps people from active outstanding warrants and sex offenders out of the encampment. Involve neighborhood representatives at meetings where safety and security plans are formed. Define and control loitering in neighborhood open spaces and parks. Limit numbers to what hosts have shown better ability to manage, and requirement for more effective host oversight and consequence for lapses. And importantly, neutral and available entity holding copies of lists of the residents. An instructive example of host attitude toward active reduction of neighborhood impact is, who does the warrants and sex offender checks? They were originally done by King County Sheriff at Share’s insistence. During the first three Bellevue stays, they resulted in 50% of those prospective, prospective residents with those issues melting into the neighborhoods before the police, Bellevue police were notified and arrived. This was directly contrary to commitments made at public meetings. Emails between Bellevue Police and King County IDed the mechanics of the problem, and once neighbors understood that, they pressed for Bellevue doing the checks, which would solve the ID issue. This was the only substantive improvement to camp operations the neighbors ever achieved. When the changes were finally made, problem solved, with Bellevue Police arriving in time for 100% of the time to see these problems and take care of it. Yes, surprisingly, CCGS in their submitted letter about this process advocates going back to the King County doing the checks, which weren’t effective in the first place, and implying a loss of confidentiality of Bellevue Police. Actually, this was not effective in keeping the promises made, and neighbors have no evidence that Bellevue breached confidentiality. The city wants to facilitate, not regulate. Neighbors would have no choice and no advocate. Facilitation doesn’t work with these unwillingness to compromise or follow through on commitments. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Karen Morris, also signed up to speak in opposition concern to the tent encampment Lucca.
Karen Morris, my address is on file. Ms. Pratt said some interesting things at the recent EBCC meeting. According to her, TBT’s rabbi said getting the permit is the hardest part of hosting. After that, it is easy. She also mentioned they always use the first permit application as a template and just plug-in changes, which leads to the guess it might be the required meetings and the attempts at compromise with city and neighbors that are difficult. We suspect the streamlined permit process is meant to do away with those. In the past, TBT has trusted Share and repeated and supported their talking points. That is obviously easier than strong oversight, but it is not balanced, as neighborhood input about impact is materially reduced and often not acted upon. Ms. Pratt mentioned that hosting is not for everyone, and that churches were having trouble getting enough volunteers to sustain hosting. She acknowledged that quite a few churches regionally that used to host no longer do. Neighbors have seen emails to King County from previous host leaders saying they will no longer host due to problems with encampments and their management. We have also heard this directly from personnel and volunteers at other previous hosts. Yet the Church Council of Greater Seattle claims in their submitted letter that faith communities are delayed and hindered from hosting primarily by ordinances. We think that is questionable. Ms. Pratt also attributed supposed improvement of the fifth TBT stay to the rabbi. He did initiate one policy that lessened impact on neighbors, but that is not codified and may not continue. The fact that half of the residents were there for that stay as other stays was also a strong impact. There is now a new rabbi again. Personnel and volunteer changes happen and introduce changeability, which could go either way. A lack of knowledge or volunteers can lessen effective oversight also. Neighbors need the predictability of regulation which won’t change. CCGS also has a problem with provision of human services to residents of the encampments being codified. They want that to be voluntary. There is evidence these services help residents in transitioning, and that shelters who do not offer it such as Share’s are not successful at transitioning residents. Share facilities have a history of rejecting such services right up to the current time. Northlake Village residents in Seattle are now under threat of banning from shelter if they access services being offered to them off-site by Seattle and Lehigh. The operator Nicholsville has the same personnel management philosophy and practices as Share. This shows how motivated they are to accept human services voluntarily. Please consider what is really best for the residents, just as we encouraged you and other jurisdictions to do about residents being allowed to call 911 and to talk freely to members of the host church. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That’s three on both sides of that issue, so that will be it for this evening. Is there any other one who has signed up?
We had one more speaker signed up also to speak on tent encampment.
Okay, well, we won’t, we won’t be able to take that tonight. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the council on another subject? Seeing none, that’ll be it for communications written and oral. We’ll move to our study session items under council business and new initiatives. We have two briefings. One of those will be the city logo and rebranding, and the other will be regarding pedestrian safety.
Getting in, our members, including in your packages a management brief, with requesting to waive the eight-hour rule to begin work on an RFP regarding the city logo rebranding effort. Also included in your packet is the staff effort that it would, staff effort and consulting efforts it would take with regard to the process, price, as well as implementation strategies this evening. This is a request that has come from both the mayor, as well as council member Newen House, to waive the eight-hour rule to begin work on this.
So I believe it was in one of our priorities to look at logo and branding. So the full council made the recommendation to discuss this. Council member Newen House and I have had the opportunity to meet with staff to kind of define some of the parameters of where we are. I think that would be a better way of putting it, okay? This was something that all council members had, had requested. Okay, so are we ready?
That’s, it’s included in your packet. Actually, we just have staff here available to answer any questions with regard to the memo. We weren’t planning to do a presentation on it this evening.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding this issue? Mr. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that this is a very good thing to do, a good project to look into. As you mentioned during the council meeting, I think we need to... As you mentioned during the council retreat, I think we need to understand the context of doing this, not just because we need a nice-looking logo. I think it's important that the logo reflects what Bellevue is today and maybe some of what has been, and especially what's going to be in the future, which means really it need to reflect on our vision and mission and what our assets are, you know, in the future. So I think this is a very important time, important thing to do because we are at a threshold of great things to happen, you know, economically and socially and everything else. So I think it's good to have the council focus, but it's more importantly, it's the council helping, leading, and working with the community to define what the city should be and is. And so I think it's important. So that's that. The reason I bring, I have a comment on this, this is really not an eight-hour rule or waiving it. I think, I appreciate the staff already actually done quite a bit of work. You know, if you look at attachment, you kind of have some idea of what the scope is and you estimate it, how much it will cost, and it's a significant, you know, the effort you gotta put into it. So I think that eight-hour rule doesn't seem to me applicable to this. You already got the work, you know, into it. Eight-hour rule only means normally it's if a council person has an idea and it takes some time to think about, work through. If it exceeds eight hours, then it's the preliminary work. It's like go, no-go kind of thing that on a specific small task, the city staff may not be able to do it routinely and then the council will allow the staff to make something, you know, to work on it. But this, I think, is beyond that. I think this requires some real significant working on, understanding, whatever it may take. The council need to be weighing on it, looking at the scope and what each of us, our idea is about this project, this logo. And so we haven't really had the detailed substantive consideration, deliberation on this subject. So I believe that it's probably more appropriate to put on the council agenda, maybe even, you know, seriously looking at it during our retreat and see what we need to do to bring this topic to the point that we can get the citizens publicly on board. So this is my comment.
Okay, so why are we doing it under an eight-hour rule and what is the result from, hopeful result from today? Because actually I am not seeing anything in the packet on this.
Yes.
I'm sorry?
There's no motion in fact.
No, there was no motion.
The six pages of description about this project.
There was a separate memo that I think went around, correct?
Yeah, there's, there's a memo in the front in your packet on city logo rebranding under council business and in there we're requesting the waiver of an eight-hour rule. And generally when work is, when work gets asked of staff to kind of tee something up for the rest of the council, we usually take that up to eight hours in terms of presenting information to help the council make an informed decision on whether or not you need to move on. So what you have included in there is the work that has been, and correcting from wrong, Mr. Harwood, is the work that has been done under the eight-hour rule to date.
Correct, correct. In other words, with under eight hours expended, correct?
Under eight hours, correct, yeah.
Yeah.
So if you want more work to be done, and that's the request, that's what we're looking at, to waive the eight-hour rule to pursue the RFP.
To continue, okay. Council member Robertson.
So, but do we need a motion tonight? Because I'm, I think we should.
We've done a number of different ways. We've actually done a head nod as well as a motion.
Okay, so that's just a quick question. So, you know, our priority 25 that we adopted is for 2018 to 2020 is develop and establish a new brand identity for the city of Bellevue that reflects both our past and our future, an identity that is iconic and leaves a lasting impression that Bellevue is a place that people want to live, work, learn, and play. And I fully support that priority. I supported it when we adopted it. I think this is the next step in doing it and I'm absolutely, and thank you, Council Member Newen House for making sure that this moved forward, as well as Mayor Chomnack. So, yeah, I'm, I'm ready to go. I mean, I think we should do it. I think it's a reasonable, it's a reasonable expense. We can, we can fund it through current resources, yes?
Correct.
So, I mean, yeah, we're, we've been really ramping up our economic development lately and having an update-to-date logo is part of that branding and economic development. And I would note that there's only one council member who is younger than this logo. So that's, the logo's 50 years old. We need to, it's time.
Why aren't they?
Severely. Mistress.
You want to move it?
I'll move that we extend the eight hours.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Ms. Zahn had her hand up as well.
I think I, maybe this actually explains it because I thought that it was also in our 2018 and 2020, you know, it's been almost two years since the retreat where we said that we were going to work on this. So my question was, is this before us because we're looking for making sure we add this money to the budget of the 100, 150,000 or is it just giving you authority to actually spend the money to get going? I'm just making sure.
It's really the latter and there's some scoping. If you've read them, if there's an associated memo to the, to the memo on the city relogo branding and on scope and how we plan to move forward on. And that's kind of what we're, and in many of these cases, we actually bring forward somewhat of a scope on some of the priorities.
So you want us to approve the scope so that you can move forward with the RFP?
Correct.
Oh, okay. Well, I'm very excited about it, so.
Okay.
I'll second.
I think it was, it was moved and seconded, so it's before us. Mr. Newen House, did you have anything?
No, I just wanted to say I appreciate my colleague's support on this. Council member Lee, you're absolutely right. This is much bigger than just a shiny new logo to say we changed something. This does have a bigger purpose, especially an economic development purpose. I mean, this logo is 50 years old. You know, the Bellevue of 1969 is not the Bellevue of today. It does not reflect who we are as a city, does not reflect our diversity, it doesn't reflect our economic vitality, doesn't reflect our vision statement. So, and if you think about it as well from an economic development standpoint, if you're at Mobile World Congress and you're looking at moving your business or you're looking to set up shop in Bellevue and that's the first thing you see, might not scream all those things that we are because I might not necessarily know who Bellevue is. So, again, really happy that my colleagues are willing to support this and council member Lee, there will be substantial public engagement on this as well. That's, that your concern is, and plenty of time for all of my colleagues to weigh in on this as we move forward in the process.
The pins can be about this big. There you go. With all those elements.
Absolutely, because our pins look very small at National League of Cities compared to other cities.
I remember pickup hockey games at the Ice, Ice Shell in 1969, so fond memories. I think we should have something like that in the logo. Okay, the motion is before us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
I oppose. I'd like to say from my, from my words.
Yeah.
You know.
Vote's been taken.
No, no.
Yeah, it has. You've said your words.
What doesn't matter. I, I, I want to respond.
You've said your words. You, everybody gets one kick at the can. You've had your opportunity on this, Congress. I appreciate it.
No, I would like to say because I voted against it.
Okay, we are now moving to the next item, which is pedestrian safety.
No, I would like to say. No, I would like to continue if I take the.
Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, I am really sorry. We're just not going, if there's one thing that we need to have is some discipline. We need to continue that.
We are spending $150,000. I'm all supportive of doing the logo. I'm supportive of the work, but you don't just send a memo and say that we have the discussion on making a logo. We're going to spend $150,000. That's not appropriate.
And, and you had your opportunity to vote, no. You had your opportunity to talk.
Well, I want to make the statement and that is not appropriate.
And you had your, and you had your opportunity. You've made a statement and we are moving.
I'm completing my statement.
Done.
I'm making, I'm completing my statement.
We are done.
Well, I'm still continuing.
Okay, so we are now, we're now moving to a topic that's extremely important because a friend of mine died this week.
No.
That's what we're moving to.
That's fine. We still can get to it. As long as you, all people.
So we are now, we are now on to, Mr. Lee, Mr. Lee, please. You're out of order.
It was fine.
This is a very serious topic. It is on the issue of pedestrian safety. We have had two major accidents, two major pedestrian accidents, and as I mentioned, one of the individuals I know from church, and that was quite the shock on Saturday to find that out. So I will turn it over to Mr. Miyaki to introduce the subject.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. As you mentioned last week, we had two very serious collisions between motor vehicles and pedestrians. This has received significant interest by the council members as well as the public. And to give the council an update on this event, as well as some of the ongoing safety efforts on the part of the city, we've invited Chief Steve Mylett, as well as Transportation Director Andrew Singalakis to share some information about this particular event and some of the efforts we're taking to keep our streets safe. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Unfortunately, my visit here this evening is not to deliver good news. Since August, Bellevue has witnessed five fatality collisions involving pedestrians, bicyclists, and motor vehicles. We just received word this morning that the two pedestrians who were struck by motor vehicles last week succumbed to their injuries and passed away. I know I speak on behalf of the entire city team when I offer our heartfelt condolences to everyone impacted by these tragic losses. The city team takes the loss of life associated with these preventable situations very seriously. As much as we can prevent these collisions from happening, we do. We implement various approaches to control or influence traffic safety and we will continue to explore additional methods to make the roadways as safe as possible to travel upon. Working with the Transportation Department, my staff and I are examining each of these collisions very closely to determine if there's any identifiable common links that we can address. I'm not at liberty to discuss the details of the five fatality collisions because they are ongoing investigations. What I can tell you is that the two pedestrians that were struck by motor vehicles within the last couple of weeks, there are two commonalities. One, that both were struck during periods of darkness and inclement weather. As we continue to see the sun setting earlier and rising later in Bellevue and as we experience inclement weather, there are some steps that we all can take to enhance roadway safety. Motorists, put down your cell phones, put down your sandwiches, keep your eyes on the road and your hands on the steering wheel, and slow down. Do not drive impaired. It takes a millisecond for the unexpected to happen, which will most certainly change many lives, to include your own. Pedestrians, do not assume other users of the roadway see you. Wear reflective clothing, use lighting devices on your body to illuminate you, and use extreme caution as you travel about the city. Pick up your head from your cellphone and be vigilant. Use crosswalks, but wait until you have the acknowledgement of motorists before you step out onto the roadway. Bicyclists, recognize that you are more directly, you more directly share the road space with motorists. Use designated bike lanes where available and you must cycle defensively. Again, don't assume others see you. And as, and always wear appropriate safety equipment when cycling. Director Singalakis, I always mess up your name. Director Singalakis will now discuss steps the city has taken to enhance roadway safety and further educate the public on how to share the roadway safely.
Okay, thanks, Chief. Mylett, Mr. Miyaki, Mayor and Council. And on behalf of the Transportation Department, I would like to express my condolences for the recent events. And I'd like to take a moment to talk about what the city is doing to proactively make our streets and sidewalks safer. In recent years, we've been able to ramp up these efforts due to the Neighborhood Safety Connectivity and Congestion Levy, which was approved by the voters of Bellevue in 2016. It's a 20-year program that generates about $7.4 million per year in revenue. And about half the program goes toward bicycle and pedestrian improvements, primarily pedestrian improvements. We've been adding in mid-block crossings, many of which have flashing beacons. Over the past seven years, we installed about 30 crosswalk beacons at key mid-block locations. Thanks to the levy over the course of the next two years, we're going to be able to install another 35 beacons, so we're really ramping up our efforts. The levy has allowed us to speed up improvements for our bicycle system as well. Since levy approval, we've been averaging over 12 miles a year in new bike lanes on existing width of streets. This has allowed the development of a connected bicycle network throughout the city. Prior to the levy, we were averaging about three miles per year. So again, the levy really allowed us to step up our efforts. And one of the major initiatives we're currently undertaking is Vision Zero, which is a program with the aspirational goal of eliminating all serious and fatal crashes by the year 2030. We are currently working with the Transportation Commission on that, on the action plan. We'll be coming back before the city council early in 2020. Education is an important element of the plan and with the police department, we've been stepping up our social media messages about safety and how people can use our streets in a more safe manner. With that, thank you.
As you know, the roadways are shared space between motor vehicles, bicyclists, and pedestrians. In coordination with other city departments and other stakeholder groups, we will continue to look for opportunities to share the city's message of what we all can do to ensure we share the roadway safely and prevent further loss of life. Again, I know I speak for all of us when I say that we never again want to witness another fatal collision. And as much as we can control or influence this outcome, we will. With that, we'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Sure, council member Newen House, council member Zahn, and council member Robertson.
Thanks for the presentation and thanks for doing all that you can to prevent this from happening again in the future. Just a couple of quick questions that might be directed more to Andrew, but I'm just curious, at both these crosswalks, there were no flashing lights at either of these crosswalks. Is that correct or was, were there flashing lights at one of them?
There was one, yes, yes, sir. One had the flashing lights and the other had enhanced illumination.
Okay.
So as you approach, the signs were, you know, displayed in an illuminated way, not with the light being, the button being pushed and it being lit up.
Is there data that shows that the flashing lights actually help prevent accidents like this? And if so, how many of the crosswalks in the city of Bellevue currently have the flashing lights or the enhanced illumination of the signs?
I don't know what the exact number is, but I know, like what I just recently said, about 35 of them in the past few years, and I can get you that information.
Okay, great, thank you. And we're still, you know, might be getting ahead of, you're still investigating and we don't know all the.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, the investigations are ongoing.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Council member Zahn, council member Robertson, council member Lee, and council member Stokes.
Yeah, thank you very much for coming and talking with us. It is tragic to have that many deaths because we've had our Vision Zero now for a couple of years and complete streets and really working on how do we keep people safe? And yet we know that as we have increase in population, more pedestrians, more bicycles, you know, we're also trying to encourage kids to walk to school and bike to school, that there's just more people and cars in the same space. And so I guess one of the things I'm wondering is, we had a Vision Zero summit a year ago at Overlake Hospital and I think we were partnering with, was it one of the school districts or there was a group within the high school where we were trying to figure out how to partner with them around being more safe? So I'm wondering if we're looking at some of these other ways to do education. You know, the other thing is, when I think about when I actually last took driver's ed, right, it was a long, long time ago. So as we think about how we actually educate the adults, drivers in our communities about what some good practices are, I'm wondering if in addition to the social media, can we partner with the car insurance companies where if people take some, you know, refreshers on driver's ed, that there's some benefit to them? So I'm just kind of wondering if there are some partnerships we can be engaged in to really improve the whole education process around this because we're only moving into more inclement weather.
Yes, so Vision Zero has about 80 strategies that we're trying to narrow down for the upcoming year and that's what we're going to be showing the city council when we come to you after we go to the Transportation Commission. And education is a key part of that. Yes, so Vision Zero has about 80 strategies that we're trying to narrow down for the upcoming year, and that's what we're going to be showing the City Council when we come to you after we go to the Transportation Commission. And education is a key part of that. And I think you made some really good comments that we can consider moving ahead.
Yeah, because I'm wondering if also the Youth Link, the Youth Council, actually, it may be just even more broadly than the Transportation Commission, right? When I think about the Network on Aging, B-DAN. I mean, can we look more broadly at engagement and participation is one of my suggestions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
Thanks. So we have the video analytics program that's going that's looking at near misses. Have we started being able to implement some of that data to make certain intersections safer?
I think the data has just been started to be analyzed. I've not seen anything that has come out of that yet. But I do know that every time there is an incident, we are looking at near misses. We are analyzing it through the video analytics. But I have not seen any results yet from that.
Okay. Yeah, I know that it takes a while to gather enough data to be able to use it. So on the side, the crosswalk beacons, I'm aware that there's three different kinds, and there might be more than that. The ones that have the posts on either end of the crosswalk that flash, the ones that are embedded in the street that are in the crosswalk edges that flash, and the one where it says something above that's hanging above that flashes. And I don't know if we have a mix in Bellevue or we're using one type. But do we have any data as to which are the most effective?
Not that I'm aware of, but we can look that up for you and get that back to the council.
Yeah, because if we're going to be, thank you. If we're going to be, if we have 35 more, and I love this. I remember one Valentine's Day council meeting, I said, "The only bling I want for Valentine's Day is more flashing beacons at crosswalks." So, because it's, I think they're really important for safety. The, we have 35 more planned. I think we want to make sure that when we're making that investment, that we're having the one that's the most effective. And personally, I would like to prioritize more of these faster if we can. And that's a discussion next year in the budget, particularly as we start to get the information from video analytics, where we find out the places where it's most, most important. And some, some may be at actual lighted crosswalks where people are taking right turns. I don't know if they are, I don't. But right turns, so maybe we need to make special signs in those if they're high-risk areas that say "No right turn on red" or a flashing crosswalk, you know, if there's, when the crosswalk's lit. Okay, finally, I know that we often have giveaways, if you will, for public safety issues. I know we've given away bike helmets and other things. I think as we start to do that with the walk to school and other things, it might be helpful to give away, even if it's just reflective tape that people can put on their jacket. Because that reflective tape, when I'm a driver, it's dark, it pops, and you can really see people. And people in dark clothing with no lights and no reflective tape, it is really hard to see. And if you're an older person whose eyes maybe aren't as good, it's even harder. So we should consider that as, as part of our normal programming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. I appreciate the presentation. I think it's important that we, like the chief mentioned, we cannot tolerate any, you know, accident to happen. But unfortunately, this is a situation where, as we have more and more people, we're trying to solve the problem of how to make cars and bicyclists and pedestrians safe or all be together. I know that the staff has been working very hard. I remember last year, the Vision Zero conference, and we have staff that's working how to build more bicycling, how to get the space more amenable for people to walk in. And sometimes it creates a lot of conflict, you know? And when you have a situation you have to resolve, and I think Councilmember Robertson mentioned, education, very important. But that's long-term. You know, I think we are happening, the challenge is happening faster than we can educate people. But the one thing that I think that can help us, and I think the city staff's looking at it, is use technology, it's a great thing. We're looking at data, you know, analytics, and so on, so on. And in a way, it's compatible, Vision Zero without traffic solutions, without, you know, environmental solutions, climate change, more efficient use of energy. All these things, I think, you know, as Andrew is working on. Sometimes longer term, you know, it takes a lot of partners together working. But I think this is all happening in all fronts. So I would encourage us looking at this holistically and more intentionally because we're not just trying to look at how to make bicycles safer or how to make pedestrians less vulnerable. It's really looking at how to develop technology that's going to improve traffic congestion as well as making the people, pedestrian cars, safer. And as well as making environment cleaner. I think that really is an area we can be more intentionally focusing on. So I'm glad that, you know, this is also interdepartmental, obviously. And so I just want to emphasize that. And I know that, you know, Director Singalakis will be working to get all the departments looking at this holistically with, obviously benefiting our police, make us smarter, make us easier. In fact, we were National Leave Cities last week. Councilmember Zahn and I, we were recognized. Well, we're the third-place winner of the city in the category of 125,000 to 250,000. We came in third place to recognize our technology, smart city, digital city award. So I would compliment our staff, you know, obviously, City Manager, for aggressively pursuing this area.
Mr. Stokes.
Well, as you know, I mean, you always get a lot of helpful insight and suggestions from council on any issue. But I think actually what Councilmember Lee just said is actually the status that you really, we have great programs, and we're really, you know, working on all these and very fast. I, I just wonder, I, as far as I know, we're ahead of other cities in doing a lot of this. But there are other cities we can learn from, obviously, and I assume that's happening. The, the level of increased incidents in other cities, I know we study that, and that's, again, that's something we look at. But part of it's just, I think we're caught in this, this rapid growth and changes, just changing in patterns. And people, as you, as you said, Chief, just distracted so much. And so guess what we're all saying, and you agree, is we need to redouble our efforts in terms of the messages and working these things. And it might help us to actually look at moving some of these safety things quicker and that the council could look and help on that in terms of, are we going to, you know, is it over 20 years, or could it be done in a, do we need to do some things now? I think it's time to reassess that. And to do that, we would, I think, have the, be glad to have a conversation with you on that because it will take some reshuffling of money and, and that kind of thing. But this, this is what happens when we have situations like this. And unfortunately, was brought to our attention in a very, very sad and depressing way. And so we can do better. And I think what we're saying is, we're all in it with you to, let's, let's make this better and see if we can eliminate and really get to, to the Vision Zero quicker than later.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The Premier didn't have anything to say on this. I would concur with my colleagues on, you know, taking a relook at how we, how we do this. I'm very proud of the levy and the fact that we've been able to add. I think, you know, maybe we ought to be looking at any time we do an intersection change. We look at adding within the, that CIP project, what is it going to take to get the attenuators in? I'm familiar with the one crossing. It is a signalized crossing, so very familiar with that. The other thing we just have to focus on is our streets have cars in them, but they also have people in them in various different modes of transportation. I was coming down over here today. Car pulled out from, you know, the, where the Bellevue Hyatt is. Came out pretty strong, came over into my lane. I had to hit the brakes, slide left into the, into the left turn lane. People are just, they're in too much of a hurry. They want to go too fast, and we have to figure out ways to slow people down. I don't know what those ways are. Maybe a council going forward will want to sit and take a, take a look at that. Judy and Chuck, Judy was, I believe, 85 years old. They have been pillars of our community for decades and decades. I know them through Sacred Heart Church. Their son, Charles, is a Catholic priest. He often is our visiting priest when our regular priest is gone. It's wonderful to see, it, it was wonderful to see his parents there when he celebrated Mass. That will be very different going forward. He's also the chaplain at the Veterans Hospital in Seattle. And that's, um, always, anyway, I'm going to leave it at that. It's difficult when something like this, when you're in a position like this, and something happens and you know the person who's involved in it. So I did want to try to put a little bit of that human face on this tonight. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for the, for the report. Okay. We now have, speaking of, I guess that was actually a council public hearing on the CIP. But we now have the public hearing on the upcoming mid-buy and capital investment program. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Miyaki, to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor. This public hearing is a requirement pursuant to state law. This is together, and the inputs from our residents and businesses regard to the proposed 2019 to 2020 mid-buy. At the conclusion of the hearing, we are asking for direction from the council on any final adjustments to the mid-buy. As we were, we are hoping to bring this back for final action next week, December 2nd. At the conclusion of the public hearing, also, staff will be available to answer any questions and receive any feedback that council has. With that, I'm going to go, go ahead and turn it over to Tony Carr, our Finance Director, joining her as K. Liu as well. And I look for, look to Tony for a quick staff report.
Certainly. Thank you, City Manager Miyaki. And as is my usual presence, the PowerPoint isn't clicking. So we're going to go ahead and once again go through our handouts. I apologize for that, but that's where we are this evening. As City Manager Miyaki mentioned, we do have direction needed from council. We are seeking, post the public hearing, a direction for us to whether we can or cannot bring back legislation next week and December 2nd. On going into Slide 2 of your packet, we head through the mid-biennium key dates. This is just a reminder slide. As you can see, we started this process back on October 28th. And this is our fifth week and the public hearing night. Oh, is it, is it tracking?
It's, I think you're on Slide 3.
Oh, excuse me, Slide 3, I apologize, thank you. So we are on Slide 3. It is not advancing. The clicker's not working. So we're going to go ahead and using our packet materials here. Thank you. Not a worry. I'm getting used to this thing about having it stop here. So heading off to Slides, heading to, to Slide 3 of your packet tonight. So this is a reminder, we've been through the mid-biennium now for five weeks, and we have our last meeting next week if all goes according to getting your direction this evening. Heading on to Slide 4, which is the mid-biennium overview. This is a chart that kind of goes through our major substantive changes that have happened in this mid-biennium. It starts off with Director Brennan Bing here on November 4th for the Development Services Fee Update. At the same time, he also mentioned that Development Services is in need of additional six FTE to deal with the growing pipeline. November 12th and November 18th, we were here talking about the Housing Fund. Senate Bill, House Bill, excuse me, Substitute House Bill 1406 does provide $625,000 to us. You did take action on your consent calendar on November 18th to actually secure that funding. We discussed on November 18th also the need for Arch to have an additional $96,000 for the two FTEs. Chief Mylett was here discussing his FTE needs increase on November 18th. Director Singalakis and Eric Miller were here on November 18th discussing the Transportation Impact Fee Schedule update. That was due to trip generation rates and the update needed on those. On November 12th, Chief Hagan and Fire Marshal Ken Carlson were here talking about the Fire Inspection Fee Update. And as you go back to that point in time, it was a couple of weeks ago, the most, I apologize. As you go back to that schedule, the most important change coming out of that fee update is that we'll be no longer be charging the building owners, we'll now be only focusing on the tenants. So the building owner will now.
Yeah, you're opposite.
I apologize. We're charging the building owner and not the tenants, correct, thank you. November 18th, we had the 1% property tax adjustment conversation. And then also, we spent some time on November 12th talking about the overall technical adjustments. Heading on to the last page before the public hearing, which is Slide number 5. There are a series of six actions that will require to adopt the mid-biennium. The first three are all service fee-based. So you have the Development Services Fee, the Fire Inspection Fee, and the Transportation Impact Fee Ordinance. Those will all be required in order to adopt the mid-buy. You will also need to set the 2020 Property Tax Levy Ordinance. And when you do that, after you do that, we would then also do the Bank Capacity Resolution. And then finally, we would adopt the Umbrella Ordinance, which is the actual mid-buy ordinance. That's the one that includes all your appropriation authority. It would also include your 2020 pay plans and also provides, provides for a list of donations and grants that are less than $90,000. So with that, as a quick overview of the mid-biennium, I turn it over to the mayor for the public hearing. And we'll take a step back unless you have questions for us.
Anyone have questions for staff going into the public hearing? Okay, I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Moved and seconded to open the public hearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the public hearing is open. Do we have people who have signed up to speak? Wonderful. And again, you have three minutes to speak. When you come down, the green light will come on, that is the start. Yellow light means one minute, red light means you're done. And I will ask you to call our first, how many speakers do we have signed up?
We have two speakers signed up.
Two speakers, okay. So we will take those two.
So our first speaker signed up tonight is Josh McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Good to see you again. I trust you all may have a copy of the letter that I sent today. If you don't, I have a copy here. So, you know, inevitably, when we undertake exercises on these fees, you end up at some point with an unexpected result. And I'm just here to talk about an unexpected result.
Right.
We, we spent a fair amount of time, I know, working with city staff as long ago as last summer, thinking about the issue that had come up with the ITE manual, the latest version of it, how the trip rates had changed. And most of the focus in our conversation then was on the office trip rate and how that office trip rate had declined and that had led to the shortfall in the, in the funds. So it was with, with some surprise when the, the new rate schedule came out that, on the hotel side, we found that there was a significant increase on a per-trip basis. And as I noted in my letter, on a per-suite basis, it comes out to about 243% increase. So I'm here actually, not to complain about the model, the model is what it is, it spits out its results. I don't have a technical argument to make to you. But on behalf of Andy Locken, who could not be here, and the Avenue Project, with which you are all familiar, it's the first project really that has started construction under the new Downtown Livability Plan. Andy worked very hard to secure the Intercontinental Hotel, the first one in the Pacific Northwest, as I mentioned. A project of which we, and I think he and all of us can be very proud. He was, he was surprised, as was the project team, to see, you know, at the point where he's just on the verge next year of picking up permits after five years of protracted effort and cooperation with the city of a $720,000 increase in fees. And so, you know, in some respects, it would be remiss if we did not come to you and say, wow, this was just really unexpected, the outreach didn't flag the hotel issue. Not anybody's fault, as I say, the model is what it is, it spits out these results. But we're just here to see if the council is willing to, and if there is a way to entertain any potential for achieving a fair result here. I've suggested one possible way of accepting projects that are under construction as this one has already started demolition out there. Maybe there are other measures that staff could address that could help to return the fee or mitigate the fee in some fashion. But that's all we're here to do tonight. So anything you can do would be welcome. Andy did say to thank you for all of your support for his project. Andy did say to thank you for all of your support for his project over the last several years. He's really encouraged and excited to move forward with it, and I'd like to wish you all a happy holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Same to you. Our next speaker?
Our next speaker is Rachel Kinsky.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm here to follow up the letter that I sent to you all on behalf of the Alliance, the King County Alliance of Human Services and Associated Eastside Advocacy Team. I serve as the co-chair of the Alliance and one of the members of the Eastside Team, which represents Eastside Agencies. And we are working together as part of the Alliance to ask each of the Eastside Cities to increase human services funding. You've heard it from me before, we'll come back and we'll say it again. And I know that nobody is fundamentally opposed to the idea. And we recognize that you have a lot of challenges in forming a budget. So, I wanted to say a couple of things. One is that, as I think you all know, Bellevue is ahead of the game in terms of Eastside Cities. We are asking all Eastside Cities to work to get to 2% of the general fund used towards human services, the grant process. We might figure our numbers a little bit differently than you do. At some point, we can have a deeper discussion about the math. But according to our math, Bellevue is at 1.42%, which is higher than any of the other cities that we're talking to. And that's great. Bellevue also has a higher property, excuse me, a higher poverty rate than any of the other cities. And as you know, the needs in Bellevue have continued to exceed what you have available. I believe the last time around, human services received about $5.6 million in requests, and there were $3.7 million to allocate, which is wonderful and generous, and just not enough to meet the growing needs. So, I guess I'm here to ask for two things. One is, I know you're trying to get down to the final wire here with this year's budget, and it's a mid-buy, and you don't usually make big changes, but you make some. And I would ask you on behalf of the Alliance to consider increasing what's allocated for human services in 2020. And then, we would like to be meeting with the Human Services Commission and the Human Services Department and you, to be Manager Miyaki, early in the next biennial process to talk about both getting to 2% and also adjusting the formula so that once you get there, it will continue to increase accordingly. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who, that's the only who have signed up, correct? Is there anybody else who wishes to speak to the city council on the mid-buy budget? Seeing none, I would ask for a motion.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing on the mid-biennial budget. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Now, time for discussion with staff. Do we, do you have anything to...
I think we're looking to the council for final direction, if they have any questions or comments.
I did have, I did have one question, and it relates to the last speaker. I believe that when we passed a resolution dealing with opening the shelter year-round, that council was asking for next year to look at a way that, for you to study how you would, how we would essentially hold the human service fund harmless for the increase. I'm, well, I'm speaking arguatively. It didn't say that, argument, it didn't actually say that. But the idea was to hold it harmless so that we weren't taking from other funds to, that go, and I do believe we are increasing for 2020, or maybe, we may have had, I think we had money allocated for this, but now that we have the shelter open, we're actually spend, we're going to spend it. So, there's actually going to be at least a greater spend in the human service because of the shelter being open full-time.
Yes, that is my understanding. It's my understanding, back in, I'm gonna go with maybe July-ish, this past year, council did move to spend a portion of their council contingency in 2020 to keep the opening of the shelter. And yes, I would assume that would increase the human services funding. We can check into the details of that.
Yeah. Do you remember how much that was?
I believe it was $500,000.
Yeah. Okay. It's a significant, it was a significant amount.
Yes.
So, I do, I do just, and very, and very proud of the work that we do in human services. We already have a function that increases by population and does the CPI. So, I think that that is a forward-looking way of doing it. Having said that, there is a, there is a significant need within the city, but I think that is something that would be handled in the next biennial budget of how we do that. It's a good idea. And, yeah. Any questions on other topics? Deputy Mayor Robinson, sorry.
Okay. So, I wanna say that you're correct. We will be talking about the human service budget next year, and I'm looking forward to that. I did wanna ask a question about what Mr. McCullough brought up. Is this a good time to do that? So, we had Mr. Singalakis send us an explanation on that, which I appreciated. I'm curious as to, I'm surprised, I guess, not being a developer, that you can do demolition before you have a permit in place.
We have a permit.
Will development services come on down?
So, I would just, I, you know, I don't wanna change how everything gets done, but it does seem that when you get to the point that you've committed to a certain design and expecting it to cost a certain amount, to add this on top of it at the last minute seems onerous. So, I'm just wondering what your thoughts are on that.
So, I'll take the answer to the initial question regarding allowing projects to proceed prior to permits. So, large projects will generally have phased permits, which would include clearing and grading, which allows them to start excavation, shoring to support the, you know, deep excavation for these larger projects, base structure or the garage. And the base structure would typically be another phase, and then the towers would go on top, and each of those would be a separate permit. The transportation impact fees are charged at the time the building permit for the superstructure or the towers would be issued is the way the process and the code works now.
But is it fair to assume that the design has been formalized by the time you're doing the excavation because you know what you have to put down there to support the structure?
Yes. So, we've completed the land use entitlements, so essentially, the scope of the project is defined. We're in the process of reviewing the construction drawings, which are all the engineering details and architectural plans.
So, how many other developers are in the same pickle?
So, the, I'm not sure if we'd call it a pickle, because they do know that the building permits don't vest, or that, sorry, that the impact fees don't vest until the time that the building permit is issued. That's, and the code requirement is something that's in their staff report that's discussed. But we do right now have between 11 and 14 projects that would have their land use entitlement and not have their building permits until sometime into next year.
Okay.
It's about, the total is about four, around four million square feet of development. So, it's a substantial amount.
I just feel bad about that. I just, you know, I don't wanna set a new precedent, but I was wondering if there's any, any sort of mitigation you might recommend.
I think it's, one thing we should note with all the development that's in the pipeline for the next year, there is just one hotel project. And we have the opportunity, in the way that code is written, to work with them on specific trip generating characteristics of their project, rather than using the prescriptive rates that were referenced.
Okay. All right.
Council members, okay, Councilmember Stokes, then Councilmember Lee.
Yeah, I just wanted to echo that, point that out in the memo. It says the rates effective could be reviewed and adjusted if the developer conducts and submits a traffic analysis for their own specific proposal mixed use that justifies different trip rates. That's what you're talking about.
Right. Right. So, that's a mixed-use project, so there's the opportunity to have what we call trip capture, where when trip to the site goes to several different uses within the site. It's one of the things we'll look at.
Okay. I guess I would add, and I don't know, Molly Johnson, Transportation Development Review Manager, Eric Miller, Implementation Planning Manager with the Transportation Department. And we don't wanna get into the specifics of any one particular development, but the one that was raised is a mixed-use development. As we talked about last week, some of the uses, the rate is going down. Multifamily was discussed in pretty much detail last week. Yes, indeed, hotel is, does have a significant increase in the trip rate. And, you know, I don't know the details of all the uses in this development, but that is even more reason to look at them in their particular mixed use, you know, and their, and the combination of different uses and the environment in which they're being located to evaluate their trip, trip generation characteristics.
I think Councilmember Lee, no, did you, did you already go?
No, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not done.
You're not done, or?
No, no. Yeah. I just wanna follow up.
Yeah, absolutely. I apologize.
I share similar concern, why Deputy Mayor mentioned. Is this, are there other projects you say maybe not, this only one that may get hit like this? Or was, it sounded to me when Mr. McCullough was talking to us, it was a big surprise to them. So, I'm just curious whether this is something that you can kind of work out with them, or should we look at the overall situation that might be something that can minimize the surprise or the impact if there's a whole bunch lining up waiting for us, you know, waiting for their decision to go or not? Because I don't want to economically affect the project, obviously, but they don't want to do it. That doesn't make sense to us.
So, the vast majority of the development in the pipeline is office, and I'm not sure if you, I remember all these small details, you guys probably don't, but that rate was changing from $6.07 per square foot to $6.11 per square foot. So, so the vast majority is minor. The one with, the biggest change is definitely hotel. But we have two projects in the pipeline with hotels, and we think that we have an opportunity to work with these very specific projects and the specific mix of uses in happening. We think that's a better solution to work with them individually as opposed to kind of changing the whole program in a way that we would need to determine what the consequences were.
Okay. So, there would be some additional work going on to talk to, to get out. Thank you.
Councilmembers on, followed by Councilmember Robertson, followed by Councilmember Newen House.
Yes, thank you. I wanted to understand, I remember when I was on the Transportation Commission, this was probably, what, five or six years ago now, that we do periodically review the fees, and they are gradually increasing. So, before we would entertain doing something different here, I'm just trying to understand, what has our history been in terms of addressing this type of concern about when a fee goes up, the ones that are in the pipeline? Because it seems like if we make a change now, is it consistent with how we've treated developers in the past that have the same situation? Can you comment on that?
Yeah. I mean, going back to 2009, when we did a major overhaul of our impact fee program, the council at that time set up a stepped increase over, over six years, where they set the fee, you know, $2,000 per trip in year one. Three years later, it stepped to 3,000. Three years later, it was about to step to 5,000. And then in 2015, that was revisited with the update, the previous update of the transportation facilities plan. And in fact, it was, almost went to 5,000. We talked about that last week, went to 4,703 to maintain the balanced budget CIP. This year, that is our intent, is to primarily to, is to keep that balanced funded CIP with the, with the impact fee revenue that's programmed in the CIP. And as we discussed last week, there, you know, there is a mix of uses, of course, that comes to Bellevue. Molly mentioned, and mentioned last week, the office is by far the heaviest, and so that's really what's kind of weighting the average, the increase that we're proposing is due to that office. We talked about multifamilies on the other end, it's coming down. The retail is slightly higher. Hotels are higher than that. But, I mean, that's, you know, that's where it is.
Okay. Because I was just thinking that the idea of as we're looking at office and what we're doing around commute trip reduction, so, you know, what are those trips? Doing a traffic analysis, really understanding the population that's gonna be in this mixed-use development, and really, the, looking at that as a way to reduce the fees versus, because I do wonder about setting a precedence that if we're gonna do something with this one, the next time we have this fee, will we continue to make special situations? Or are we really looking at how to actually reduce the trips because that will be better for everybody? So, what I hear you saying is we'll be working with them on the traffic analysis and what's possible. Is that right?
That's, that's what we think is the best course of action.
And then, if you reduce the number of trips, then the quantity you're multiplying by that fee multiplier is lower. Is that right?
Right. So, the challenge is the revenue needed to support the investments, the capital investments that are necessary to continue to support the development as it continues to happen in the city. This is one tool that the city uses, impact fees, to pay for that growth. So, again, the point with kind of the reset that's happening as a result of the trip generation rates changing is to ensure that the revenue stream remains adequate to meet the budget need for the capital project.
Which is important, because we were just talking about our transportation needs earlier. So, okay. Thanks.
Councilmember Robertson.
Okay. So, I have a questions, comments on the impact fee, and then I'll close with a question for Tony on the human services funding. So, on the transportation impact fee, what has happened is this manual that sets the trip, I'm just restating so that we can check my correction, that sets the trip generation rates for almost every use across the board in the downtown has gone down, so that the impact fee amount that we had before was, the amount that was generated was much less than we had expected. So, and as people, as developers decide to do a project, they have balance sheets, they're called performas, where they plug in all the costs of a project, including impact fees. So, my expectation is that most projects that are now in the pipeline had impact fee rates that were plugged in under the old ITE manual, which had the higher generation rates, maybe with a 3% inflator, which is what we have in our code, which happens automatically. And that what happened when the ITE generation rates went down is all of a sudden, that amount that they expected to pay in impact fees now goes into the profit line because the impact fees went way down. And so, what we are doing by raising the impact fees is we are trying to do a revenue neutral where what people had projected three or four years ago is what, about what they're gonna pay, plus the 3% a year going forward. And so, except for all of the, except for hotels, and this is where I need to have you guys correct me, all of the trip generation rates, at least in the downtown, and I think across the city, went down. But hotels, for some reason, the trip generation rates went up. Is that, that's correct, yeah? Okay, you're nodding.
Well, with, retail also went up slightly.
Oh, a little bit, okay. Retail went up a little bit, but hotels went up a lot. Is that correct? Okay. And so, this adjustment, which makes office, and actually, multifamily is even gonna pay less with the adjustment, office will pay about the same, retail will pay a little bit more, but it's basically kind of a revenue neutral, except for hotels, which are going way up. Okay. So, and so, the performer that the developer is creating, all of a sudden, they don't get a windfall from the lower ITE rates. It's actually, even if we didn't change it, they would still be paying more, even if we didn't change it, right? But because we changed it, they're paying even more. Yeah?
More or less.
More or less, okay.
With these mixed-use projects, it's complicated.
Right, yeah. I'm just trying to simplify it so that we can all understand it. And we have these projects in the pipeline, they're in the same position roughly as the Intercontinental Hotel, but only one of the 11 to 14s is a hotel project. So, of the other 10 to 13, they're paying probably about what they expected to pay under, for when they first performed out their project, to what the new rates would be. So, okay, that being said, the, I just wanted some clarification. If we pass the impact fee rates as recommended, you've said that you'll work with the hotel development. development to try to make sure that it's about right. When you say you'll work with them, is that something staff does with them, or does that also require them to do a transportation study? Or are those two separate alternatives?
So we do need to work with our traffic engineer, because that's where the expertise lies. It's not a full-blown transportation study, it's a trip generation study.
Okay.
There's, we have, the reason that this, I should say that this one changed quite a bit, was because when we went to the new data, the new data just didn't support the low rate that we had previously used.
Okay.
So we're looking for more data, they can provide more data, they can do counts, they can talk about other properties, that kind of thing, and then that helps us get a more, what you might call a more reasonable rate, because we just don't have the data for anything other than this real generic rate.
Okay. So I'm a little confused. So you're, so is that you working with the developer to figure it out? That's what you're describing?
Yes.
And is it another alternative in addition to that, where they could do a full-blown transportation study if they wanted, and bring that forward and get a different rate?
Oh, yeah, they can bring as much information as they...
So those are two different options, kind of.
It's more of this, I think it's...
More of the same. They can provide...
Simpler or more complicated.
Okay, they can provide more information or less information, but you'll work with them either way. Okay. I'm just trying to clarify what their options are, because it's quite, you know, that's a big number. Okay, so the...
What color do you want the rooms to be?
This is all about the policy, Mayor, and trying to understand it.
Well, I understand.
Okay, not everyone does. You do. I do. So, I understand that. So, on human services, on human services funding.
Perfect.
On human services funding, that was like three minutes. I mean, you have to be really rude to me. It's really not necessary. The, on the human services funding, the information we got from you, Ms. Call, was that we were spending about 1.85%.
Right.
Do you know what that percentage goes up to with the extra $500,000?
I don't, but I'm hearing a whisper behind me saying it's about 2%.
It's about 2%. Yay, that's great, okay. I thought it must be, just doing the gross math in my head. Okay, that was all, thanks.
Thank you.
Ms. Newenhouse.
Although Rachel Krensky, who came before us, said it was more like 1.4, so I'm just curious what the discrepancy is between 1.4 and the 1.85.
I actually don't know what the discrepancy is. We certainly could do some research into it. I think there's probably just how the math is calculated, and when I calculated the 1.85, it included the human services funding, it included east side pathways, and the utility tax rebate program. So it's feasible, all those things may not be included in Rachel's numbers.
That's possible.
And it's also feasible that she could be using our entire budget, which includes fund balance, while I'd probably look at our expenditure number. We certainly can look into it for details.
Okay, great, yeah.
It's probably just a math, thinking of how to think about it.
It probably would be, but it would be in favor of keeping it above 2% going forward. In regards to the conversation about the hotels, I'm all favored for working with them individually to find some relief here, find some solutions, because it certainly is a big increase from 1,700 to over $4,000 per room. So that's certainly a significant impact those to developers. My question to you is, in a time when the city is growing, in a time where Visit Bellevue is encouraging more and more tourists to the city, what might be the long-term impacts to hotel development in Bellevue with these new impact fees?
So it's hard to speculate. I would say, obviously, it's a cost. I don't know that it would be, I think demand is strong here. We're seeing not only development and interest, more interest on hotel development, but also multifamily and office, et cetera. So I think we're in a very good market, that's what's attracting more investment. As far as the long-term impact, I think if we're not collecting adequate revenues to support the impact from growth and mitigating the impact from that growth...
Sure, let's go ahead, yeah, I get it.
It's part of the balancing act that we've got to do. So those are the policy choices that the council makes on how we fund that impact fees is one.
Well, the one suggestion I would like to make is certainly come back before the council and let us know if it is having a negative effect on hotel development, and perhaps we need to look at this again in the future. But appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, I would second that concept, because one of the things that would be of concern is we're not, that we do not get the more convention-level hotel in the city. That's been one of our challenges, is we're getting a lot of high-end and not as much at the medium end, and we have some at the lower end. I think one of the problems is going to be, while yes, it's a mixed-use development that Mr. Lotka is doing, my guess is he is working with one set of developers who do hotels, another set of developers who do residential, or investors maybe be the, as much as the same. I'm not sure if he's doing all of the development, another group of investors or developers who want to do the retail. And so it's pretty hard, I would imagine, to get that mix and make that work, when if I'm doing the retail, I'm sorry, if I'm doing the apartments or the condos, I'd be saying, hey, you know, mine went down, you're right, you know, it's probably going into the bottom line, and no, I don't want to support the Intercontinental Hotel. I also have to think that with the clientele of an Intercontinental Hotel, the trip generation is probably less when it's located in a urban core like that, where people are going to most likely be staying onsite or very near. Chances are, they're not going down and putting $2.50 in the fare box of the 271 to get to the Husky game, I'll admit that. But the, they probably are, you know, maybe generating fewer trips. So that just seems like an odd thing to me, to have everything from, you know, a freeway hotel and a urban hotel, all at the same, at the same trip generation rate. That just seems, seems odd. So, anyway, I don't know what you can do about it. I've heard some people thinking maybe the single study is the way to go. I'm going to kick the can one more time with Mr. Stokes here.
I'm just going back to that. This is the recommendation from the Transportation Director, and the option that they're recommending is to do exactly that, to review and adjust the developer, you know, kind of what you're saying, I think you added some nuances to it that are good. So I guess that's, the council would agree that that's a good way to go.
Okay.
Right?
So you would be bringing back the ordinance with the full changes has been discussed, but with the knowledge that a particular project like this could go through the study process?
Because we can't change the rule now where it attaches without upsetting a whole lot of other applicants.
I think that's of accurate statement, Ms. On.
I was going to say, I support the piece about working with them as well as looking, doing the evaluation and look back. Since my first go-around, I didn't talk about the human services one, it is one I want to talk about, and that is that, for me, it's not necessarily looking at whether we hit 2%. It's more of what the speaker talked about, which is that the last go-around with the grants, there was 5.6 million requested, of which only 3.7 was allocated. So I really look at that as the gap and not necessarily the 2%, because I think actually, if you look at those numbers, we may be talking about more than a 2% funding for human services. Because as I think about the people that have come and requested grants, we should be looking really at those and saying, right, how do we make sure that we are able to fund all of them? I remember last time, there was some question about how we help some of the applicants with the way they apply, and so if they actually understood that, I think the next time around we may be even seeing more applicants that would be eligible. So whatever that might look like, maybe between now and then, really understanding a bit more about the gap in the requested amounts and what we've actually funded, so that we're forecasting for the needs, and if that hits the 2%, great, but I don't want that to be our limiting cap. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, followed by Mr. Lee.
I just want to respond to counsel member Zahn's concerns, the Human Service Commission has really strong criteria for what they fund, and a lot of times, the people requesting funding are not serving the Bellevue community. So not every applicant is going to be considered regardless of how much funding we have to give.
Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I want to add my two cents with the human service needs. I always remember, I think we always know that the needs are a lot bigger than what we fund, you know, whether it be applied or not in the human service applications, because people realize, you know, that we don't have enough money to help people who are really in need, we're much short of that. So whether it be 2% or whatever percent, I think there's needs out there. So my question is that the $500,000, that's already budgeted for the mid-buy, right? And next year, a continuation of some sort, we can talk about it. That's not, yeah, not the mid-buy, that would be the full budget discussion.
The buy-in and budget, yes.
This is the mid-buy. That's why I feel that's important, that, you know, when we talk about, since we're going to talk about one thing that I have been wanting to discuss, I haven't said anything yet, is, but we're going to have the budget for approval next week, right? Actual action?
If council provides the direction tonight, yes.
Okay, but I just will just give you a preview, I'm not going to talk too much about it, isn't the property tax increase. I've always voted against it, and, you know, when we voted for the budget last year, you know, buying them, I did, and I think I would do the same, but I won't speak now until then. The reason I want to do that, for objecting to that, is because I think we need to have needs to show that we're going to fund the specific things we want to do, and that we need to put the money to that use. When we fund the 1%, it's ready to fund for, eventually, there's a cross between need and, you know, and this demand and whatever, in the future years to come. And I think that we have some, I have some questions about it, you know. I really like to see human service really funded adequately. So that's the reason why I'm very, you know, sticky about, you know, what we're going to do with the money when we have, and this is a demonstration of what we can do. Human service needs more money, and let's give them more money, and whatever they may be, even beyond the $500,000. But that means we have to make choices, and we have to talk about what we are choosing for. So that's my end of my speech.
Great. Ms. Robertson, you forgot to mention the public safety improvements that are in the upcoming budget. I wanted to offer you that opportunity.
What are you talking about?
Public safety improvements. I was just going to offer you, since my crack about color, I was going to offer you a couple more minutes on something if you wanted it.
I don't need to talk about anything else.
Okay. Mr. Newenhouse?
I'd rather have a apology than extra time.
And I just did.
I'm good, thank you.
So, is the direction to bring the budget back in its form? Take a motion on that?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded to have the budget come back before us next week in its form. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just to go around.
Preference, I have seen people take breaks, so is the preference to keep working?
Or to temporary.
With to temporary encampments? What's that?
I'm sorry.
Well, okay. Yeah, I think people have taken them as time has been going on, people have, so if you, but I would prefer just to kind of keep moving into the presentation, and then we'll get into the discussion, and please...
I would take a five-minute.
Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break. We are going to be back at 9:10. We are going to be back at 9:10.[251.45]
The different elements, the health and safety requirements, the neighborhood engagement, frequency and duration, length of stay, et cetera. So that may be a good kind of reference to use as you provide us your feedback and your deliberation.
And these are not must accept everything in one or the other. There can be a little bit of modification.
This is certainly at the council's discretion on how you want to kind of match these elements up.
Okay. Okay, so I think it would be important to get an idea on where people are on this so that we can have a almost final measure come before us. When are we planning on having this come back?
So we come back scheduled for the ninth of December, so it will be the final meeting of this year.
Okay, so coming back for the ninth. I'm not sure where people will be. There may be one or two issues that are still out there, but at least that way we could have a, we could have whatever is direction you get tonight, we could have an ordinance adopted to that and the potential of another amendment or two. Okay. The deputy mayor followed by council member Robertson.
Thank you for the presentation. You know, to me, this is a question of how best to treat the members of our community, both housed and unhoused. And I really wish we didn't have to talk about homeless shelters and tent encampments. But the fact is, we have a serious homeless problem and we do have to talk about these things. We have to figure out how best to do it. So I first want to thank Temple Benetoura for the amazing work they've done in housing the Sophia Way women. They stepped up to the plate and have given them housing at a time where it's really cold outside right now. And if it weren't for them, they would be outside right now. So I definitely want to thank them. So I, I'm leaning toward a hybrid of the hybrid, of course. So, so looking at option three, the draft Luca, that's fine. Removing the litter patrol, that's fine. The post issuance meetings, I think that's, both of those are great. The length of stay, I'm good with 90 to 120 days. I'd like to hear what my fellow council members say. And in terms of frequency, I think a 12 to 18 month gap to the same site makes sense. I don't believe we should have a gap between deployments. The whole purpose of this is to provide the services and the shelter that these individuals need and making them, you know, have a gap between being able to go to another place is a problem. I think that without that, we may encourage more variety of places to be throughout the city and it's not just one religious facility always doing the task here, so. And I also like the last two things in terms of the streamlined permit process. I had two questions and an ask. So I wanted to know if we could ask them to collect information to feed into the data system that the county is currently using with the homeless population. Not that it would be a deal breaker if somebody refused to provide it, but the more that we understand about who we're working with and what their experience is, the better we can track our successes and determine how best to change things. And I really applaud the county for trying to review the data now.
So actually, that was a question that, to what extent can you require HMIS as part of this when we're not a funder, I believe, of either of the two?
So I said it's not a deal breaker if they don't provide it.
Yeah, I know. Maybe for others.
But I would like them to ask at least. And then, do we have any controls for loitering outside of the church property?
Well, that was why that we were looking at the removal of the litter requirement because that encouraged that loitering outside of the walls confines of the deployment. So the expectation would be if that were to be removed, that that would keep residents on the property. There wouldn't be a need for them to be out except for them to get to the bus stop and go back and forth.
Right. But if for some odd reason, everybody likes to hang out in front of, in a certain place that's outside the church property, do we have controls for that?
The encampment host could be contacted. The residents can call and, you know, bring that to the intention of the host and the host should be able to, you know, talk to the residents and encourage them to stay within the confines of the deployment area.
Okay. All right, so that's, that's already in place.
Yes.
Okay, and then the last thing is I would ask, I know the answer to this, but I would like you to describe it for the public. The difference between the tent encampment and an emergency shelter and the requirements for permitting, because right now Benetoura is providing emergency shelter for the Sophia Way and they were not required to do the whole public process in advance of that because it's not the same as a tent encampment. So could you maybe explain the difference between those two?
Sure. So the, what's, the Sophia Way support being provided by Temple Benetoura is within the structure of the church. So it is part of their mission and to deliver those services. We, the city's involvement in the case where it's, it's providing support for the homeless in, inside the church building is really just fire and building safety. So we'll do a, we'll have an inspector, fire and building inspector go out, review the facility to ensure it's safe for that purpose. Generally built for sleeping purposes, so there are usually some basic requirements to ensure that kind of level of safety is raised for that purpose. But again, there is no specific land use permit requirement in our code for that particular function to occur within the church facility. Temporary encampments are a little bit different. They are specifically, as you know, defined within the code. They are external to the existing facility, but on the, on the church property or on the temple property, in the case of Temple Benetoura. And the process that we have essentially laid out is the one we've been using for the past 13 years, which is part of the discussion now as we work to implement permanent regulations for the long term.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. Council member Robertson, I believe council members on, council member Stokes had their hands up. I'm not being very good about being random tonight, but.
Okay, thank you.
Maybe I had it.
So this was presented to the East Bellevue Community Council and ultimately after we make a decision, it's going back to them. Did they have any specific comments yet? They had concerns in regards to length of stay. They were concerned about that. And then they asked how many deployments had occurred within their boundaries and that was the Church of Resurrection. One of the council members was a, attends that church and she stated that it really was a non-issue at that time and she asked if I concurred with her overview of that. And I did say that at that time, that deployment did go very well on the side of Church of the Resurrection.
Okay, thanks. So. Oh, sorry. I was going to just further respond to that. The council as a whole didn't weigh in, but individual council members did ask questions, as Tony stated, and also there were some questions about security. And one of the East Bellevue Community Council members also questioned the need for a one year gap between the deployments and asked about that as well. So there were questions in both directions from the individual members.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. So I'm also leaning towards package three. So under the current land use code, we allow a stay of 60 days and the consent decree allows that to be up to 90 days with a hardship exception, where you're showing a hardship. So if we went to 90 days, that would be, there'd be no requirement to show hardship, they would just get the 90 days, is that right? Correct, and you wouldn't have to show a statement of faith based on your religious tenets. Okay. So I'm in favor of that because I think that's more consistent with a lot of cities in our region. I also think it, it balances the burden, the right of the place of worship to do their mission while balancing the needs of the neighborhood. So, and I'm comfortable with the gaps and deployments as presented in package three. If we are going to make a change on the deployment gap, I would, to make it less, I guess we had a one-year gap under the consent decree and this would have that, to 180-day gap between the deployments. If we're going to reduce that even further, what I would suggest we do is instead of having it be a citywide gap, there be a deployment gap in sectors of the city. We divided the city up into sectors for marijuana land use code purposes and I think that that would be a fair way to do it because right now, one neighborhood has had the brunt of the impacts because the vast majority of the encampments have been in that neighborhood. So just some food for thought if we're going to reduce the gap beyond the 180 days. I think we should keep it at at least 180 days for any sector. So, and I support the streamlining in the three years. I think it's good to ask, to ask them if they would provide the data. It also might actually help people get services. And I hate the need for this, but as, as you just explained about the interior emergency shelter, they can still do that. And that actually is probably a more comfortable situation for the people needing the emergency shelter to be indoors. The, that's a fire and building safety. If they don't have sprinklers, would that be also subject to the 180-day?
Yes.
Okay, so, so that could be 180-day stay, not a 90-day stay, 180. And if they have sprinklers, it could be much longer. So that's, I think, a really important point. Finally, there's been some allegations over the years with certain encampments not allowing their residents to obtain services, not allowing their residents to speak to people, or on the alternative, requiring their residents to come and testify to city councils. Is there anything we as a city through the permitting process can do about that? So over the years, we have heard the same information and what we did between the deployment at Temple Benetoura, the fourth and fifth, we added additional conditions because we heard these comments, we changed, and so we added a condition that prohibited residents from, to allow them to call 911. We, to also have them be able to participate in any type of support services that they might need. And so what Rabbi Libber did was he created a room, made it accessible and told residents that if they, and had a caseworker on staff that would come out once a week and meet with individuals and they could sign up and come do that. So it's, it was something that we felt that we wanted to add with the fifth deployment and so that we could acknowledge these changes and so that, also to show that we are listening, that we are capable of changing and make conditions per each deployment, that each deployment might be different. And so that one needed that for that fifth hosting. Okay, so that's something that was just done in the permitting, it's not in the code? It's not in the code. And so what we have found from our implementation experience is that maybe this is something that doesn't need to be codified, but it is something that we've worked with encampment hosts when we, you know, see the need for it. Because as an example, the First United Methodist Church, that administration was very open, listened and had many different support services that they put together for Camp Unity, as an example, when they were there. So it's something I think that is built upon the encampment host and their ability to get out and reach out to the operator. Okay. Well, that's good because I think that having access to support services is really important. So, yeah, so just to recap, I'm, I think option three is the land use code plus the consent decree plus more to make it easier, but I do support the 90 days. So, thanks.
You know, I'm gonna, I'd been going in the same order. I'm gonna go with council member Stokes first, then council members on, and then come over to this side of the table.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure what, what the option three is now because it's a little bit messed around with. We can talk about that. I want to clarify something, ask you a question first and then have some comments. You, along with this, we have attachment D and it's a public hearing draft, the Luca, clean version, right? And that's, that's a proposed, this would be the Luca.
That is package number one.
Right, package number one.
Yes.
And it's, and in, in this, and so all of this information would be part of that, would apply, correct? And this includes all kinds of requirements and meetings and all of that, right? It's pretty extensive in terms of.
Yes, there is a required public hearing and that would still remain. Meet and confer with BPD, also with daycares that are in the vicinity. All of those things are not changing. Those things will still be applicable.
Okay. I mean, the reason I brought that up, I think it's, we've kind of assumed that, one, that based on some things that happened several years ago, apparently, that there's still concerns and there's a fear that this encampment will impinge on the neighborhood and cause problems and these people are not trustworthy because we want to have warrant checks on them and all these other things. And I think, and it goes back to the, to the court case as well, in terms of public safety and, and public, public interest on this, safety and health. The requirement is that you, that is important, but it's not the overwhelming. I mean, how you approach it is, and the overall tenor of the, of the legal decisions, is that you go to the least, you know, more towards getting the, taking care of that concern, but not with a, it has to be very tailored and respectful of the overall objective. So it doesn't, and it's also saying you can do both of those together. And I think what we're seeing in this package is that, and what we've done in the last several years, we keep going back 13 years and these stories seem to have grown since they've been told over and over. It seems that at this point, we have a good handle on this and this is something that we, that is working and can be made to work and that's the intention and there's a lot more added to this. So, and, and the other factor is that things have changed in 13 years. And as I said before, I think we have to look at this in terms of not, gee, this is something we really don't want to do, we wish we didn't have to do it, but we have to, so let's kind of, you know, come up with something that would kind of satisfy everybody. But we have committed in this city and we're committing in this, working very hard in this county to really deal with homelessness and people out in the bushes and people who need help. And this is, I look at it from that lens, is, is this a tool during this short time period to help that goal and our priorities in this city and in this county? So I, I think the elements of package one, the draft public hearing, the Luca, is, is the best one to make this work. I think that the neighborhood engagement piece, including all the stuff that's in here, I think is very strong. I think the duration and frequency, I, I think there's this tendency, if we could just make it two weeks, we would be happier. The reality is 90 days and 120 days is not a whole lot of difference in the big scheme of things, but in terms of what is presented very, I think forcefully, is that 120 days makes it work better. And I don't know why we want to put a barrier to that. And I don't think the impact on a relatively small number, very important, and understand, if it was to be in my backyard, I'd be raising questions about it, but I would want to know how you're gonna make it work, not how do you keep it away from us? And I would look at and then towards, let's, let's do something that actually helps these people. The objective here is not to, it really, to me, is not to give the faith-based community their religious rights. They have that. And it's not to give the, the neighborhood a shield from dealing with these people who are all over around us, all in the bushes. It's helping the people who are in the shelter. That's what we've committed to in this city. And I think doing something that's less than that, of when we have options, really doesn't comport with our, with what I think Bellevue's values are. And I think, think the streamlined permit process is, is a good thing to do. I'm not sure, we have never got into what difference does it make in terms of streamlining of the process and how much time it would take one way or the other. I just think that we're at a point where we can protect the public health and safety and there's no, you know, question that there were some questions that come up, but, I mean, the allegations have been that there were a lot of crimes, the fact of the matter is, our police department, I have no, no way to, and I don't think anybody can challenge their integrity or their veracity, reports that there's really no difference and they're on top of this. So I think we're, I think we're doing our job for the public and for the neighbors. At the same time, we're doing something that's very essential at core to the city of Bellevue. And we hope that we will get in the next year, two years, a shelter, there, I think we're gonna need more in Bellevue until we can resolve the issue. So my feel is, let's do something that we can do now in good faith, make it work, be as accommodating as possible to both parties, and all three parties actually, because we can't forget that the people who are affected of this are just as much involved and have just as much interest and rights as everybody else does. So I think we can do it and doing some other ones that are kind of compromises or whatever, I just don't think is the best of Bellevue. And that's just my strong feeling on it. So I support package one as designed.
Good, thank you. Council member Zahn.
Yes, thank you. So I was just thinking about the fact that ultimately this is about safety for the housed and the unhoused and also predictability for the neighborhoods and the faith community. To me, that's, that's the goal and the lens and that this is one tool in the toolbox of the pathway out of homelessness, not the only one, but one of the tools. And then, as I think about where we're headed, the last one of these was in 2016 and since then, Sophia Way is in the middle of building an emergency shelter for women and families. CFH is, is getting started on, working on developing their plan as well. And so I think the landscape has changed a bit from when the consent decree was first put out there and the, the different tools that we have to help folks come out of homelessness. So I was kind of thinking about the fact that as we look at this particular tool, I think it's substantial to think that they either move two times a year or three times a year. So when you think about that many people moving en masse, it seems to me that even though it only looks like a small bit of 90 to 120 days, it literally says that they're gonna move three times instead of two, which to me seems significant. And when I think about actually just living in tents, I think that's actually a hardship in and of itself. So this idea that only if there's hardship would we actually extend time just doesn't seem to make sense to me. So I support the 120 days. I was thinking about too, that as I look at these pieces, there is the code versus the best practice. And it seems to me that our faith communities want to be good neighbors and so the, having a informational meeting for neighbors, I'd like to think that they would want to do that already. And when I think about the fact that collecting data, if that's one of the things that will help better understand the community that we're trying to serve and get out of homelessness, that it would seem like that would be a best practice that they would want to implement, whether we put it in code as a thou must or it's just more of a, it makes sense. I am curious about one thing and that is that when I look at the extended temporary encampment permit, I'm trying to do the math on option three and it seems to me that if the length of approval is three years, then from the time, if I pick, if I look at option three, with an 18-month gap, what we're really saying is that they have a, you know, if it's 90 days or 120 days, then they have an 18-month gap. Now they're gonna come back and apply for this extended permit. They're only, only gonna have one, one more extended permit before the three years runs out. So somehow I don't think that that math is working if we're actually looking at that as a streamlined method. It seems like by reducing it to three years, we're not really helping the situation. So I don't know if three years still makes sense or if the four or five years actually would make sense. The, the thing called periodic certification, what is that?
So. Oh, well, there was a, so the periodic certification would be part of this streamlined process. So in an applicant for.
Oh, got it. So it goes with the extended piece.
Correct.
Okay.
So that would be, because the question has come up, how do we know in a lengthened period of time, so a five, three to five-year permit, that the conditions of approval are still being met?
Okay.
And that would be how we would address that issue.
Okay, I got it. Okay, so if I look at, I'm supporting, I guess, a hybrid, which is the 120-day duration. When I think about at the same site, I would look at that as a 12-month gap, but, and help me understand, as I think about the site, let's pick two churches that are across the street from each other. It seems to me that when we say same site, we might be saying 12 months within a site and some really localized proximity, because if we're talking about no one community having too many of these and hopefully, so by the way, I also support the no gap between deployments. So if churches across the city, both are actually looking at having a tent encampment, it seems to me that the, the neighborhood effect of, I'll pick a, pick a neighborhood, my church, Aldersgate, let's say, you know, if we, if there was one there and one in northwest Bellevue, it seems like there's not really a, a localized neighborhood effect. So I support the no gap between deployments, but I would like to see in terms of the, the limitation within the same site, that we're actually looking at some proximity so that if two churches are across from each other, across the street, it seems like the neighborhood feel would be the same. So I don't know if you can help me with whatever that might look like. Maybe that's similar to what council member.
The way that we've applied this has been property specific, so owned by the religious organization. So a church across the street could host, you could have back-to-back under this, even under, under our current regulations, you could have host facilities across the street from each other that freight back and forth essentially.
So to me, that seems like that would be the effect of having it in the same neighborhood.
Right.
So I guess for me, I would support the no gap between deployments if we could just look at the same site being some localized proximity.
So.
If that makes sense to you, what I'm trying to say.
What, what you're trying to say, I think, makes sense. I think that staff did look at the possibilities for a gap between deployments in, you know, I think, under various other land use frameworks such as the marijuana regulations and other types of regulations. And I think the issue with predictability exists with those frameworks only because we do not have control over where the religious institutions are located. And so no matter where you draw the line, there could be one across the street that is technically in a different neighborhood or a different sub-area. And so for the predictability factor and to ensure the continuity of the public safety and health resources, the citywide gap was the choice that the staff chose to advance, although the duration of that gap certainly is something that could, you know, change as well. I mean, we, so that is what we did to look at, to arrive at the citywide gap. That's not to say that council can't direct us to move forward otherwise.
It would seem to me.
It just is a challenge in terms of how to draw the lines.
It would seem to me that, given a choice for the faith community, having no gap versus having a gap of some magnitude citywide, it would seem to me that, I mean, I don't want to speak for the faith community, but it would seem to me that one would give actually more flexibility in terms of both reducing the amount of localized effect of a neighborhood as well as allowing deployments in communities that are farther away, so.
Okay, so council member New in House, council member Lee.
Did you go first?
I did.
Okay.
Go last.
All right. So, good discussion so far, and I first want to also give a shout-out to Temple Beni Torah as well, for taking in the Sophia Way and those women that are experiencing homelessness. And all the hard work that's been put into this so far by, by staff. I'll be succinct in my points here, and keep it to the three-limit rule that we no longer seem to be adhering to. But Package Three, yes, is the, the package that I would, at this point, be leaning towards. The safety and security line with the consent decree, the neighborhood engagement. The one question I had on here about the litter patrol requirements, I understand why you want to do away with that and the loitering, and you've heard from residents regarding that. But again, here, what is, if, if litter is an issue in a particular neighborhood, what, what can residents do to ensure that that litter issue is, is dealt with in a timely manner? Because what I've heard is, is a lot of shoulds. They should address it, they should address it. And, and my biggest concern regarding this is that, you know, residents actually have a voice here, and that they are going to be able to have some corrective activity if needed. Same thing with, as Deputy Mayor Robinson mentioned, if they're loitering in one personal, in one area. So I'm just curious what the plan would be, then, if there is, if there is, and I'm not saying there would be, but if there is a litter issue, how do, how do they get that addressed?
Well, they can contact the encampment host, the point of contact, and then just tell them about the issue that's happening with that particular item, and where it's located. And then there could be, then perhaps members of the church themselves would go out and pick it up, versus maybe the members of the residents of the encampment. So there could be various ways that that could be handled.
Right. And as, I think quite a few of my colleagues have mentioned tonight, it's always about a balance. We want to protect those, those neighborhoods and those residents, as well as ensuring that those experiencing homelessness and those tent encampments have a good experience at that religious facility. So I am for the 90 days encampment maximum. Like Councilmember Zahn, I'm more concerned about that, the same site. I wish there was a better way to kind of calculate. I understand the difficulty around it, because literally across the street could be a different neighborhood. And I am more concerned about those neighborhoods that are going to be so effective, time and time again, you know, be it that, especially that crossroads, Lake Hills area. I can understand their, their feelings around that, or feeling as if they're getting hit harder than maybe other neighborhoods on this. So, you know, for me, the, the gap between deployments is not as big of a concern there, and I think we've heard a couple of good suggestions there. But for me, it's really to that same site, and, and those, and those residents of that particular neighborhood. And I don't have any issue whatsoever with the length of approval. Three years sounds, sounds appropriate. And again, the, the 90 days, it seems to be more consistent with other cities, as Councilmember Robertson had, had mentioned before. So that is currently where I stand right now, and therefore Package Three is what I'm leaning towards. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. What we're doing is really to help and provide service to the homeless. And I want to thank Temple Beni Torah for, you know, their hosting so many times. And I've had some experience with them, and I've visited some campsites, and talked to volunteers. And so, you know, they actually have been working, you know, with great compassion, and the church members understand the importance, you know, to serve our, you know, homeless populations. And obviously, you know, Bellevue Police is very important, because they are part of the city, and they're, you know, assurance, law enforcement, making sure that, you know, the neighborhoods are protected. And so neighborhoods, obviously, is important. Neighborhood concerns, neighborhood, you know, have to have concerns, and perhaps feel a little bit of intrusion, and, you know, there are people who come and who go. So this is not a simple issue, just, you know, one shoe fit all. It's really talking about balance. I think that's what we come down to. We need, we, we want to thank, and we need hosts to make sure that they are willing to, to provide the service. And we want to expect, you know, the neighbors' concerns, and see, you know, what we can do for them. And to do that, I think the city has the opportunity to enforce, you know, the necessary laws, safety, health, you know, these are important to everybody, including, you know, the homeless themselves. And I think the hosts can assure the volunteers helping, and the camp management, you know, they have to be responsible to do the right thing. So I think the city can work with the hosts and other potential hosts to provide the continuing service, which is needed. So to do that, I think we are talking about this balance. That's what makes it challenging. However, by looking at the three packages presented, I think Package Three probably provides the most balance for me. We're talking about something that's very much, is already happening today, under the consent decree. There's some, some changes, you know, we're talking about the litter patrol removal, and obviously the neighborhood might be concerned. And the, but I think it's explained by the staff that the neighbors can bring it to the attention of the host, and hosts can do what they can to remedy the problem, which is, you know, our, our police, our staff, you know, can do things to help, to help in that process. And we've added, you know, in Package Three, periodic certification with conditions. So I think that's another thing that can help everybody involved, the neighbors as well as the hosts, and the campsites themselves. And I think the duration of 90 days, which is what we have now, I think that's reasonable. I mean, we can put any time, any day, go on to, you know, somebody can be happy with six, somebody with 200, it's just whatever. But I think it seems to be something that's working for the last, what, 13 years? Yeah, so it's proven to be workable. The frequency, I think 18 months is just what's working today. And I like to, you know, same site, you know, the city, the staff recommend the citywide. But I think that the same site would be good, because having restricted to the same site, there's flexibility for the churches, for the hosts. If they have other churches in other locations, you know, they can at least continue to do so, without, you know, getting no service. So I think that would be a, a good addition. And, and eliminate it when deployment per calendar year. So I think that provides more right, you know, to the, to the churches, or to the hosts, whether the, you know, in this case, religious facilities, you know, they are not feeling that we're depriving them the, the opportunity, if exists, if other churches desire in other areas. And also, that doesn't put all the burden all on the same neighborhood. So I think that addresses. So, and the last one, the extended temporary encampment permit, I think that's all good, subject to revocation, or sustained co-enforcement action. I think, again, I think it's mutually beneficial to the hosts, as well as the neighbors, and as well as the homeless people who live on the site. And the length of spade, length of approval, approved for three years period. That's better than, not a view, potentially, no, we cannot, they don't have a time period. So this gives them some certainty, yeah, consistency, at least for three years. I think that's an improvement. So by looking at the three options, I feel that Package Three would be the one that offers the most balance. So I would support Package Three.
So, and I just want to follow up to make sure I understood on that. On Option Three, you agreed with the, we've had some discussion with people between 90 and 120, but you agreed with the 90-day. But under frequency, you were 12-month gap to same site?
No.
Or 18-month gap?
I'm willing to stay with 18 months.
And I thought I heard-
That's what is-
I thought I heard you say one-time 12-month gap.
No.
Oh, no, okay. So you want 18-month gap to same site, and what about between deployments?
180-day.
So exactly what's there?
Yeah.
Okay, I, okay. Thank you, thank you. I just needed to get clarification. I think I followed most people. Well, I, and this may not surprise people, I would have favored, basically, keeping with the consent decree. Faith communities, city, have all agreed to that over the years. It has worked extremely well. I know when I'm on the opposite side of something, however. So if we are moving toward Package Three, I think the 90-day maximum is important, and I want to talk about that balance. And that is the balance between a religious entity being able to do that very intense ministry to a group of people, and the ability of people to be safe and healthy within their homes, separated by often simply a six-foot cedar fence. That's a very intense type of, of interaction. And we've seen that particular interaction the most in Bellevue. So I would stay with the, with the 90 days on that. The, I, I'm, I think I've heard most people say a 12-month gap in service, in, I'm sorry, a 12-month gap to the same site. Did you say 18? I thought you said 12.
No, I said 18. Well, what's in the Package Three?
In Package Three?
The only thing I said about deployment and gap in service are that if we're going to reduce the 180-day deployment, that I wanted to make sure that there was a bigger spacing, like a-
A sector gap.
Oh, I got it, okay.
Sector gap, or a, a buffer that's like maybe a mile or two miles, something like that.
Okay, and I'm-
But I'm okay with Package Three as written.
As written. I, so, okay. Councilmember Newenhouse, would you move to extend for 15?
I move to move, to extend the meeting by 15 minutes?
Second.
Moved and seconded to extend by 15 minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the meeting is extended. Conrad, were you 180? Or, I, I'm sorry.
I, I-
No, 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 I'm sorry, Mr. Newenhouse, were you eight, yeah, I understand, were you?
He was 12 months.
That's what I-
Sector gap. What kind of going with Jennifer, when did you say, like, a 12-month sector gap?
Sector gap, yeah. I was more concerned about the same site, but the 12-month or the sector gap.
It was one, it was 180 on the Package Three.
Oh, sorry, yes, it is.
Well, that's between deployments.
So 18-month gap for same site, and 180 days between deployments?
Yeah, as written.
Okay.
So that means that we would have periods of time where there's no, no ability to have a tent encampment anywhere in Bellevue, if you did that?
Because you'd have the, you would have, once there has been one, you would have a 180-day gap. So if, if one ended on December 31st, it would be-
Six months.
July 1st, before you could have another one anywhere in Bellevue.
I don't think that's a good thing.
It's the same site.
No, 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 you're talking about all of Bellevue.
Citywide.
No, no, it doesn't say, the same site.
No, that's, that's what that means. 180-day gap between deployments would mean there would be a 100, there would be a six-month period where there, once there has been a deployment, there would be a six-month period where there are no deployments. Mind you, it's been quite a while since we've had a deployment. When was the last one?
2016.
16?
2016.
Right now, 12 months.
It's 180 days currently.
It's, it's a one-year, one per calendar year deployment and a 180-day gap.
Yeah, length of approval is for three years, don't forget.
Oh, doesn't say that in the question.
Length of approval-
So let's, let's have, we need to have one person talking at one time. I'm, I'm just trying to get to where people are. I, I know, I've heard at least four saying, I've heard four people talking. By the way, I really do oppose the three years, but I'm just going with it here. I'm trying to get us somewhere. So what I've heard is at least four people in agreement with Package Three through 90 days. Now I'm trying to get 18-month or 12-month gap to the same site, and is there a gap between deployments entirely in the city? So that's what I'm trying to drive to.
Yeah, that's a good question.
You may.
So I like what Councilmember Robertson recommended about having some sort of a sector gap, but I don't know if you would consider that too onerous to the faith communities? What, how do you think that would go over?
So we would have to take another look at that. We did consider that option when we were kind of trying to map out what, what options to bring forward. And as Ms. Lynn noted, there are other issues that emerge when you have, you draw lines. And so how do you decide what are the neighborhood boundaries that you're going to use, or the sector boundaries? You know, how many faith-based, you know, communities reside or have their facilities within those boundaries, et cetera? So there's lots of variables that we would have to kind of regroup a bit around and figure out how to do that.
Would it be better to say, you know, within so many feet of the, of the one that's hosting?
I think from a religious exercise standpoint, there would not be a certain difference, because the potential would still exist for one host's exercise to impact another's. And the distance between, you know, of course, all the facts would have to be considered. So the, if there is, because of the consistency desire, a citywide gap is what is recommended. But if there is no citywide gap, then the 18-month gap to the same site would still provide the consistency to the specific communities surrounding each encampment.
Okay. So if that's what you're recommending, that, that's what I will support. Because it's, to me, it's so important not to have a citywide gap. It just, I don't think we can fulfill, anybody can fulfill their mission if they can only do it for a short period of time, and they have to completely dismantle everything. Can't provide the services.
So you're, so the, I'm sorry.
That's what's in doing.
So I'm saying the 18-month gap to the same site, I agree with. But I don't believe in a, in a hundred, in any gap between deployments. I would just take that out.
Ms. Zahn?
So I just want to point out that if we look at the 18-month gap to the same site, that the three-year expedited seems to be somewhat mute, because they, literally, from they, when they apply for that second time, there's only one more within that period. So it's not really streamlined.
I don't, I don't think that's your understanding. See, length of approval means it could stay there for three years.
No.
No?
No, 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 no.
Oh, sorry. 90, 90-day maximum is 90-day, right? Understand. But approval, you have one approval, then you can follow an approval. Those approvals are not necessary.
The length of the initial permit is approved for three years.
Yes.
But the other provisions in whatever code council chooses to adopt would still apply, which means that Councilmember Zahn is correct, that if it's a three-year permit, and there is a site-specific 18-month gap requirement, the maximum number of hostings under the three-year permit is two.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, just thought I'd point that out.
Yes, Councilmember Zahn is right.
So, um, so, so I'm just trying to get to what's going to get drafted. So what I'm hearing is Package Three, 18-month gap. I think I've heard four people in favor of 18-month.
To the same site.
I've heard four, yeah, to the same site. I've heard four people in favor of the 90 days. I think I'm hearing four people say no gap between deployment, but I'm not 100% certain of that. I know you want something different, okay?
I'm okay with a gap.
180-day gap, yes, but the, the issue becoming a legal gap.
Right.
Right.
I think we've heard three people say no deployment gap, which is Councilmember Robinson, Stokes, and Zahn.
Against no- Against no, no gap?
Yeah, no deployment gap.
Yeah.
And I'm okay with the 180-day gap. I just said if we're going to change that, then we should at least have a gap, maybe based on a two-mile radius or, I mean, whatever. We need to have some sort of separation. But I'm okay with it as written.
Okay.
The 180-day gap is good with me. So I've heard three people, and the 18-month.
I'm okay too.
Yeah, and Conrad's okay with the 180-day.
So I'm okay with that.
And you're okay as Councilmember?
That's what I said earlier.
We have four people okay with the 180-day.
So, and this could change on final adoption, okay? I'm just trying to get to what is going to be in the, in the package. I will tell you I have a real problem with the, I would rather streamline all permits and have you come back for a permit application each time you're going to do it than to have an automatic approval. I may ask staff to work on something that would do that. Because as I remember some of the previous, we're talking about a permit process that takes about 120 days. And we're trying to get that down to take about, and the re-permitting would even take about 90 days to do. If I'm remembering from earlier, I'd rather have a 90-day, come to a 90-day schedule and go through the permit each time because, quite frankly, the people change. My church changes over. The temple has changed over as an example. And so there is, there is that change. And even the provider of the service changes. Share is a very different group than camp unity in a lot of ways. So I just, and I, maybe somebody can tell me there's one. I'd love to know it. I don't know of a, well, I guess actually there would be a 90-day. It's not really, you get a permit, you just have a streamlined process to get the permit. You still have to go through. Is that right? Even under Package Three, the eligibility prior permit at the same site, you actually do have a permitting process you have to go through.
So you go through the initial permit process that exists now, then the streamlined permit process. There's a reduced amount of information and reduced process that speeds it up since it's been a successful deployment previously.
Yeah, it's that, it's, the thing that gets me is the successful deployment. And who determines it's been a successful deployment? That's what, that's what to me becomes the issue.
Can we do the data collection?
And could you look into how, what requirements are there? And by data collection, you mean putting into the HMIS system. So can we look at whether or not that, how certain groups do that? Whether it's by funding or not, and whether or not both camps do it? I don't know at this point whether they do or don't. I think it's important. Mr. Stokes?
Yeah, clarification, looking at three. So 18-months gap to the same site. So Temple Benaitora could only do this every year and a half, correct?
That's right. So there would need to be an 18-month gap before they could have another deployment at Temple Benaitora at the end of the previous, from the end of the previous encampment or deployment.
So what's the 180-day gap between deployment mean?
So the 180-day gap would apply citywide. So at the end of, say if Temple Benaitora was hosting, at the end of their hosting or if that encampment, there would need to be 180 days would need to pass before another encampment could occur anywhere in the city.
Six months.
That's currently, the 180 days currently exists.
So we would, yeah. There would be more times when we didn't have the shelter than we have shelters, basically. And actually, going back to this, if it's an 18-month gap, the same site, and three years, that doesn't make a whole lot of sense.
Well, again...
I mean, you're not going to, you're not, you're not going to be there two times.
Right. So under that expedited permit, with this reduced timeframe, the three years, it would allow for two deployments to occur within that permitting process.
That's right. Two, three years, two deployments of 90 days. 180 days in nine, almost 1,000 days. Right.
But there would be the ability to host it elsewhere in the site beyond 180 days.
But that's not realistic. It's not happening. I mean, it's just theoretical.
Right. So the experience has been, again, they're not, there isn't a high demand for temporary encampment deployments in the city. So that hasn't been our experience. Now, that obviously can change. We're thinking ahead here, obviously, the council is when we're doing this. Because things are changing. But again, we're not going to give a close... We are trying to advance for the council's consideration, options that are reflective of where we have been over the last 13 years under the consent decree and then allowing for modifications to adjust the deployment period, the gaps or not. Again, those are in front of the council for your discretion, and we're looking for some direction.
We need another extension.
I move that we extend to 10:30.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to extend to 10:30. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Two opposed. Okay. So...
Just to clarify, in Package Three, the frequency and duration provisions are the same as they exist under the current regulatory framework except that there is a one-deployment-per-year requirement that is in the consent decree that is no longer part of this package.
So we're actually regressing from that? Because you won't have...
It actually allows for more liberal deployments. It's less restrictive.
But we just stated, the reality is that there is less demand for this. We're talking about, we're kind of, it's kind of playing games with the... Councilmember Robertson?
Thank you. I think that the council's already given direction on that issue for the evening. I wanted to weigh in on the, on the application. And having two deployments on one permit, with one of them being a more expedited permit, is better than what we have under the consent decree as far as being more flexible for the religious institution. If people don't feel that's adequate, I'm happy to vote with the mayor to go back to a new permit every time. But otherwise, I think that that's fine. It's more liberal than it is now. The 12-month gap is more liberal than it is now. The 90 days is more liberal than it is now. Right now, it's 60 plus unless you show hardship. So I'm very happy with Alternative Three, and I'd like to get home tonight.
I, too, I think we're very close to, again, this is providing direction for the draft to come back to us. There can be amendments. Mr. Lee?
Thank you. I'd like to move that we approve the Option Three because we are making it more, well, number one, the decree, the decree is going to be ending.
Before you, because you used the word move, we're not adopting anything. Okay, so it's a direction.
I understand. I'm just making a statement. I haven't made the official motion yet. Because we, the consent decree is expiring. We need to make a code change. Otherwise, we don't have anything. Okay, then we have to start this whole thing over. I think we're giving the best proposal from the staff, looking at giving us all the pluses, minuses, and we're discussing a balance. And we're talking about balance. We have a lot of preference we can make. So from the, based on what the staff has done, based on what we've looked at, based on what we're providing service now, and I think this provides the religious, the hosts, the religious organizations particularly, more latitude, more freedom. At the same time, we heard about the neighborhood's concern, and we are addressing that. And that, I think, provides the balance. We can either do that now or we can continue to treat it. And we will not get it done because we're going to have other options and choices and preferences. So I will put that out there, and if, you know, if there's support, we'll make a motion. Otherwise, we cannot get it done.
So I do think that we are, I think what we have heard is at the moment, and that this can always change, at the moment for direction, it would be essentially what is Package Three? I don't think that there's anything that anyone is arguing against. There are people arguing against that, but I think at least four people have said to pull that forward as the option to place before us. I would again ask people if you want to do amendments, and I think some of them will be as easy as having the potential to have an amendment to make the 12-month gap to the same site. I think there was some discussion about the citywide gap. So if people want to work on that, please do so with staff. Let's try to do this in a way that it is available in the packet that goes out for the December 9th meeting. I would really prefer to see that in writing. There may be a couple of other things that council members, based on this, that council members may want. And, you know, and we actually do have Package One and Package Two are essentially written. So if somebody wanted to move that as a striker, they could move Package One or Package Two as a striker. I believe. Is there any other further discussion on that? Okay. With that, and seeing that there is no other business to come before us, we're adjourned.